I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of San Carlos on June 27, 2016. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's great to see so many members of the public with us tonight. If you are wishing to speak on any items, we have speaker cards in the back. I'd ask anyone to please fill that out. We're doing things a little bit differently tonight. One of our members of the city council is joining us electronically from Scotland. And I have a little formality to go through just to make sure that we're compliant with the law. So I would like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953B concerning teleconferencing of meetings. Councilmember Mark Olbert will be participating remotely from Glasgow in the United Kingdom in accordance with the Brown Act. This location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. So here's the tricky part. Mark, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. The technology works. Can you hear us clearly?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. And are you in compliance with all the steps required under the Brown Act to allow for your participation by teleconference?
Yes, I am.
And do there happen to be any other members of the public present at your location?
Sadly, I appear to be the only person.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Item three, are there any changes to the order of the agenda from staff tonight?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any changes requested from my colleagues? Hearing none, we'll move on to report from closed session. Mr. Rubens, is there a report from closed session?
No report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to item five, council communications and announcements, and we will start with Mr. Grokot. Nothing tonight. All right. Mark, any council communications and announcements from you?
Not tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple. I attended the closing the gap task force meeting. It's really Closing the Jobs Housing Gap Task Force, which I've been a member of for the last nine months or so. This is a group that's specifically dedicated to solving the housing crisis. In the last six years or so, San Mateo County's created over about 55,000 new jobs. We've created 2,500 housing units. So everybody knows that housing is an issue. And we are making some significant progress on it at both at the county and the city level. And I'll have more to report on that later. And that's it.
Thank you. Ron?
Mr. Mayor attended the SBWMA meeting, which is the Joint Powers between 11 cities in the peninsula and the county, which basically is our garbage provider relative to ecology. And we have an executive director position that's open, and we expect to have that filled, actually vote on our new executive director in the July meeting and have a new executive director in place by August 1st.
Okay. Thank you. I just have a few items to report on. I had the pleasure of cutting the ribbon on the new Orchard Supply Hardware, which opened recently on Industrial Road. They're actually, I think they had a grand, an official grand opening party this weekend, but they report that business is brisk, particularly for new stores that have been opened. I think it's a great addition to our town. I have kept up the tradition started by Mark and Ron of visiting the San Carlos Elms, which is our senior assisted living facility in San Carlos, and doing a town hall with the residents once a month. So I had an opportunity to visit with them on Friday. They had a lot of great questions, as always, and it was a lot of fun. Thirdly, I'm a member, a board member of the Peninsula Clean Energy Organization, which is an organization started in San Mateo County, which you will all be hearing about pretty soon. It's an organization that's going to buy electricity on the open market and make it available to customers, electricity customers, as an alternative to PG&E. And the design is to, or the idea is to provide electricity that's of a higher renewable and greenhouse gas-free content at or below the price of PG&E. The most significant thing that we did at the last meeting is to set our rates for the year. And I'm pleased to report that the default product, which people will get automatically, which is 50% renewable and 75% greenhouse gas-free, is going to be set at 5% below the cost of PG&E. So we'll be providing greener electricity at a cheaper price. Lastly, I just wanted to provide a brief announcement of an upcoming event. A couple of weeks ago, at the first farmer's market on Sunday, I did a little Ask the Mayor event where I was there to answer any questions, take any feedback for the city. It was a great event, and I really appreciate everyone who came out. I'm going to be doing it again this upcoming weekend on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So if anybody wants to come up with any ideas for how to make the city a better place, any feedback, any questions, I will be there for two hours on this upcoming Sunday. So I hope to see you. And that is all I have. Ron, did you want to say anything else? I just saw you put your light on there.
I was simply motioning to a resident in the back that we have seats in the front.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, there are plenty of seats in the front, if anyone would like. Okay. We'll move on to item six. Item six is for public comment? Yes. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Item 5B, staff comments on the city administrative business. Mr. Malpik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One brief update this evening for the public, and that is on our PG&E natural gas transmission pipeline, line 147. For folks who've been driving up and down Britain the last few days, you may have noticed that PG&E is once again digging at several locations along the pipeline. For the last couple of years, they've been working to do inline inspection of the line. That inspection took place recently. They finished about six weeks ago. And the digs that are happening right now and will be happening for about the next two to three weeks at the outside are being done to simply calibrate the data that's been collected by the test probes that have been put through the line with actual spots along the line to make sure that the data matches up with reality. That was planned for from the beginning. So we don't have any reason to believe at this point that there are any additional defects with the line. It's all part of the regular process. The city and the public will receive copies of the final report when they're available, likely between four and eight weeks from now. And then before the line can be reactivated by PG&E, that report would have to be submitted with a request from PG&E to the CPUC, who would then have hearings before allowing PG&E to increase the pressure on the line. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Now we will move to item six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. I have many speaker cards for items that are on the agenda, but no speaker cards for anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda? Please come on up. Good evening, Dave.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to take this opportunity as a representative of the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, which is one of the sponsoring organizations of leadership program in this area. Leadership Program for 2016-2017. It's sponsored by the communities of Redwood City, Belmont, Menlo Park, and San Carlos, and it's organized through the Redwood City Chamber of Commerce. Since 1989, Leadership has been educating participants on issues of great interest and concern to residents while igniting the spark of interest to give back to the communities where they live and work. Leadership provides participants with exposure to major issues and concerns at the local, county, and regional levels. The program is held the second Friday of the month from September through June. I know there are a number of people maybe in the council and in the audience who have been through this program. Most recently, from the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, our board president, Dominic Chiricello, participated in the program. And I went through the program myself about two years ago. Each day has a specific theme, which includes, that starts off with a program orientation and leadership retreat. Then it goes on to Government Day, covering areas of housing and transportation, education, economic and business, public safety, sustainable communities, health care, and civic engagement day. The early registration deadline for this program is coming up. It's July 1st, but applications will be accepted through September 2nd. There's, I'll give the city clerk information on how you can get in touch with the organizer. It's the Redwood City Chamber of Commerce Carolina Webster. Contact the chamber directly or go to their website for more information. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about a great program in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, could I just make? Folks, plenty of seats up here. We won't call on you, okay? Seriously. Come on up. Come on. Plenty of seats.
Six seats up here.
Six seats. There's all kinds of seats. Seat there, one, two, three, four, five there, one there. If you want to stand, that's the last time I'm saying it, okay?
Thanks, Bob.
Sorry.
All right. We'll move on to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. I have one speaker card. Is Karen Molinari here?
Yes.
Are you asking that item K be removed for separate consideration? Are you supporting that item? Or are you?
I guess I have to remove it.
Okay. Great. We'll remove item K and consider that one separately. Anyone else wishing to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Item D.
Item D? Okay. Item K and item D. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we approve items A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J, and L. Did I get that right?
I think you did.
And I move to adopt ordinance number 1505, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending the zoning ordinance Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, modifying regulations on formula business uses in the downtown core area, and establishing a sunset date of February 28, 2017, and reducing the conditional use permit application fee for formula business use applicants in the downtown core area.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes, with the caveat that I would like my no vote recorded on the item related to formula businesses.
Okay. And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I think we should take these items right now, because I know we have a long agenda tonight. I don't want the speakers to stay too long. So we'll take item D, consideration of adopting a resolution approving Exhibit C to the amended and restated agreement between the cities of Redwood City and the San Carlos, and San Carlos for fire and emergency services for fiscal year 2016-2017. Do we, Matt, you want to make a comment, or do we want to get a, do you want to get a report from staff on this?
Yeah. My only comment is I just don't want to take this agreement too lightly, and I thought it would be good, despite the length of this meeting probably, to give a few minutes to the fire chief to speak about our service between the two cities.
Chief, you want to come on up? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Stan Moppen, your fire chief. While we're still in transition with the new deputy, I'll be coming up here to help him work his way through the transition on this. We're really happy with the proposed Exhibit C before you tonight. We've been listening very closely to council's concerns about the increasing cost of public safety. And this year truly reflects the first time that we're able to get the increase down to 5%, which was a target of the council, one of the target places for the council to, if you look at the increases. One of the things that we did was as the fire chief, having served in the position of deputy chief for the city of San Carlos, I was able to look at the allocation of personnel costs and be able to make some real-time adjustments where, when we started the contract, we didn't have a whole lot to go on. We had a lot of our best professional guesses at this and how to put it together. But now that we've had a few years in this contract and this partnership, I was able to take many of these positions and reallocate them to the proper percentages of costs, and which brought us down to the 5% increase again, which was what I heard the council's target position to be. We seem to be moving forward with a very robust contract. Service delivery is, we believe, at an excellent level right now. We're meeting our response times and many of the other goals that the council has set forth for the fire department. With that said, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions? Okay. Hearing no questions, is there anyone from the public who'd wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item 7D on the consent calendar.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
So that's resolution number 2016-067. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. We'll take up item 5K, adopting a resolution approving the final map for the 2811 San Carlos Avenue development. Do we have Mr. Savay or someone from, or Jay? Good evening, Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. On this particular item, we received an email from a resident earlier today that wanted to express some concerns about the project as it moves forward to the council. So I think at this point in time, it may be a good idea to hear from that resident, and then I will respond to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. And I assume that's Ms. Molinari. Come on up, Karen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for letting me speak on this important issue. I want to say first that I am actually very pleased to see a sustainable and LEED-certified housing development within our town. I'm very excited about that. What I want to focus my comments on today is that I think it's imperative that we include that the developer be required to engage the local constituencies and the impacted stakeholders as part of the approval process in the development of their traffic and staging plans. If you're not familiar, within this block in San Carlos, it's quite unique. Within 100 yards, there are four public schools and one private preschool. Those four public schools are going to see an increase of 1,000 students in the foreseeable future. With this in mind, I believe this development requires a bit more planning than business as usual to ensure a successful transition into the neighborhood. Clarion Home seems to be a conscientious developer, one who prides themselves on transparency and ongoing communication and great listening skills, according to their website. So I'm very optimistic that they will work closely with all impacted community members in the development of this plan, rather than let the affected community members know after they've developed the plan. Understanding the existing and future growth that's going to occur in this area is very critical. Within one block, we have two new schools being built in the exact same timeframe as these 11 new homes. All of the traffic, the delivery of heavy materials, all of that will be using the exact same city streets. And this corridor is heavily traveled between the city of San Carlos and Belmont. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there are students who are walking to school down Club Drive. The only side of that street with a sidewalk is the side that the development occurs on, and there will be two new streets right before they cross to come to school. So we want to make sure that there are appropriate flaggers, that there's appropriate consideration with the SAM Trans Stop, and that they work closely with all impacted parties, not just the neighbors within 500 feet of this development. So I really ask that the council please require this developer to engage the constituency and not just encourage the developer to work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jay, you wanted to respond or offer some thoughts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Tonight's action by the council is really the, what's called the final map approval. So it's really not the approval of the project plans and the construction plan, the staging plan, and any of the activities that we know need to be addressed. Because this will be a very drastic change at this particular location in town. And because it has become such a popular drop-off point, pickup point, parking lot, access point, where kids are walking back and forth across existing property now, we know that's going to have to be carefully scripted, carefully planned out. So where we are right now is we've received plans for the onsite and off-site civil work, which is the engineering stuff that's boring to most people. And what we will be receiving after we've been able to review those, get the comments back to the applicant, are the construction staging plans. So at this point in time, we'll work with the developer to make sure there's outreach and an opportunity to have input on those plans, because it is going to be a busy, busy location. However, I will tell you that the work hours for that project as it relates to the streets will be limited to after the school drop-off time and then before school pickup for the big, heavy work that has to be done. But we do know there's going to be a lot of activity at that location.
Thank you, Jay. And so if the public is not satisfied with the level of public outreach, or if the public is not satisfied with the plan, what is the appropriate time and place to voice that in this process?
I believe it would be to come back to the city council and express those concerns. We don't have-
Is this specific thing going to come back to the city council for approval?
At this point, no. It will not.
Okay.
It's working its way through our normal development process.
Does it require any, does it require Planning Commission or Residential Design Commission approval?
I believe that's all done. That's all done.
Okay. So there isn't really a check in the public process? This is just whether or not, you know, if we're hearing concerns from the public, they would come back to the city council and we'd talk to staff about it?
That's correct. There isn't an opportunity for this to come back to at this point in time. But we will absolutely talk with the developer, and we will say strongly encourage that that's going to occur.
Okay. Matt, you got a question?
Yeah. I was just, you know, it seemed to me a justifiable concern of the resident regarding outreach to something beyond 500 feet. So how can we, you know, if the council wanted to comply with that and say 1,000 feet, for instance, how can we do that? Is this the process to do it, or is there some other step in the process where we would do that?
So I'm going to defer to our city attorney, because we're getting past the public comment portion of this, and we're talking about possibly some action the council or direction the council wants to give.
Right. Yeah.
As mentioned in the staff report, this is the final step, and it's basically a ministerial step by the council to approve and implement what's already been approved by the Planning Commission and the city earlier. There are conditions of approval for this project. There's a detailed development plan. So this is about the map complying with the requirements that were imposed by the Planning Commission and approved previously, and the approving the improvements that are going to be in the right of way. That's the subdivision agreement. So it's really now, I don't remember the, all the details of the conditions of approval, but I remember there was a lot of public at the Planning Commission meeting and raising some of these same concerns. So I'm pretty sure there are some conditions related to traffic and staging.
We can make the request that they expand the noticing involved, but at this point, we're past the stage of being able to make a requirement.
Thanks, Matt. Bob?
So through the, so we're not, and I was going to suggest not even 1,000 feet. I was going to suggest that every, that all the schools get, if there's 300 students, they each get one. In other words, an idea of what's going to happen, because that's the people who are going to be dropping their kids off. And you're telling me that we can't require the developer to do that?
We'll make sure it happens.
Okay. That's what I, that's, I mean, that's just a suggestion of mine, because the people that are going to be impacted directly are the students-
That's correct.
... and their families. And if we give them a detailed information of, you know, the trucks aren't going to be there till 9 o'clock, or, first of all, that this is even happening, which probably most of the people don't even know it is going to be happening, unfortunately, that would be great, Jay. That would be, I think that would be terrific if we could just let them know what the information is. And I'm sure that the developer is well aware with all the kids that are running around there, that they're going to have good flag people and good information about not having large trucks there at 8:15, or, you know, early, real early or real late, but not between that and, I don't know, between 2:00 and 3:00, I guess, or something, whatever the, you know better than I what those things are. But if it's possible to get the information to the schools, I think, and to each student, that would be terrific.
We'll make sure that happens.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Ron?
Yeah, just one question. Is there going to be a project contact number?
That's, yes, that's imminently doable. So we'll make sure that that happens, and we've done that on a number of projects lately and found that to be very valuable.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. One more question. I had one more question. You go ahead, Bob.
I'm sorry. This, and this process, just to lift the public note, this process is not an unusual process. This is the normal process for housing of this size. There's nothing, no shortcuts have been taken. This is the normal thing that normally happens with these developments.
That is correct.
Right? Just want to make sure that everybody understands it's not a special situation. Thank you.
All right. Mark, did you want to ask a question or make a comment?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Or actually, not so much of a question as a statement. I certainly support the suggestions that my colleagues have made about making sure the entire community is notified, and I particularly like Bob's idea. I would, however, ask staff to go back and review the process and procedures that we use for reviewing and approving developments. This one is unusual in terms of its impact on a broader public constituency. But ideally, we probably should have had an opportunity to make this kind of thing a requirement, rather than having it come up at the last minute on a ministerial action.
Can I respond?
That's actually something that's more in the community development department. So we'll make sure that we touch base together and look at that comment that Councilman Olbert has made.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 7K.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Crystal, please call the roll.
This is for resolution number 2016-66. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. Now we will move on to item 8A, a public hearing, consideration of adopting an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 65858A, amending municipal code sections 18.04.030 and 18.41.020, imposing interim development standards addressing lot size, lot width, and flag lots within the R6 single-family zoning district. Mr. Savay?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Recently, members of the public have expressed concerns with regard to the potential development on proposed lots of 5,000 square feet. Currently, the standards in the R6 single-family residential zone, which is the predominant single-family residential zone in the city, allows for lot sizes that are 5,000 square feet and 45 feet in width. And tonight, staff is presenting the city council with an urgency ordinance on this matter. So just to provide a little bit of background, the city adopted a new zoning ordinance back in 2011, and since then, there have been six subdivisions of lots 10,000 square feet down to 5,000 square feet. In terms of the purpose of tonight's ordinance, the intent is to address some of the community concerns that we've heard, not only about, I think, subdivisions, but also we're going to be looking at the standards for single-family homes. There's also a concern with regard to flag lots, and those are irregularly shaped lots that have a very narrow driveway, and they're usually in and behind existing lots. And so they are different than the traditional or historic lot pattern that we see in a lot of our single-family residential zones. So the idea is to adopt some interim standards to address the lot size and shape this evening and to allow staff some time to research this issue further and then bring it back to the Planning Commission and the city council. But why not just a flat-out moratorium on subdivisions? And so what I said earlier is we're asking you to put new standards in place. And the reason for that is the state law really trumps local zoning law with regard to subdivisions. It's the State Subdivision Map Act, and it says that cities have to process a subdivision application.[1723.66] So we don't have a choice. We have to process those. So we can't stop that. But what the city can do is we can alter our development standards temporarily and set those, set some new rules up for lot sizes. And let me show you what I mean. So what we are proposing as part of this urgency ordinance this evening is to make the lot size in RS6 10,000 square feet instead of 5,000 square feet. And also, the lot width would go from 40 to 65 feet. So these would be the new interim requirements. And essentially, it would have the same effect on 10,000-square-foot lots. You couldn't subdivide those into two 5,000-square-foot lots during the urgency ordinance. So how long will it last? Well, the first step is 45 days. And state law says that the city council must act within that 45 days to extend the ordinance. So if the council does that this evening, we'll be coming back to the city council for consideration of extending this within the next 45 days. In terms of next steps, the idea is, as I noted, to evaluate some of the regulations that we have, talk to some other cities, get some more community input, go back to our planning commission, and get a recommendation from them. And then final city council action on this issue. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Al. Questions for Al? Ron?
Just a couple to begin with. Can you go back to that, I think that second slide? The one that had the map? So do I understand that correctly? There have been a total of six subdivisions since 2011?
Six lot splits of 10,000-square-foot lots, yes.
Six lot splits since 2011. And how many, how many more applications for lot splits do we have right now?
I think we have one pending, and we know of another one that's on the way.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, Ron. Matt?
Al, in the R6 zoning, aren't a good many of the lots currently, you know, often typical? They're 50 by, say, 120? So they're at about 6,000 square feet?
That's about right, yeah. 50 by 120, 50 by 100, yes.
So seeing that is the case, I'm just curious on the red line that you showed us about making it 10,000 the minimum because then that means there's quite, I mean, a greater number of lots. If that were to stand, the greater number of lots would be, what, legal non-conforming?
No, they would still all be legal lots. So it doesn't affect any of the lots that are currently legal. So it has absolutely no effect. They wouldn't even be legal non-conforming. They would still be inconformist. They would still be legal lots. And you could still add on to your house or build a new house or something like that.
To go further in that questioning, though, if, if, for instance, we just said 6,000 is the minimum, then what we, what we're talking about is what would be the minimum for the creation of a new lot, correct? So if we had 6,000 as the new minimum, that would still allow for lot splits in the future if you have a lot that's 12,000 or greater?
Yes.
Just, just if you have something that's less than 12,000, you couldn't split it, at least not, well, let me ask, let me not assume there. If you had a 10,000-square-foot lot, you could, I don't know why anybody would want to do this necessarily, but you could split it and have one that's legal for, for development. And is it, would it be legal to have one that's not able to be developed?
Not according to the current standards. You still have to meet, any legal lot would need to meet the width and area requirements of our code.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Thanks, Matt. Checking in with Mark. Any questions, Mark?
No, Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment that I want to make when we come to that point, but no questions at this point.
Okay, that sounds good. My, I have two questions, Al. One is, so what we're doing is we're temporarily rolling back the regulations to what they were prior to 2011. In working through this issue, what have you been able to determine about why the change was made in 2011 to reduce the minimum lot size?
Well, this was during a downturn in the economy, one. And I think there was a desire to, there was thought about housing development and our arena requirements and things like that. So there's certain requirements on the city to create new housing. And it was part of the idea of furthering our housing element and creating new opportunities for single-family homes in our community.
I see. So to some degree, it's had the intended effect in some ways, but now that we're sort of hearing from residents that maybe that wasn't the effect that everyone wanted? Is that an accurate summary?
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay. And then your last slide, you had a series of steps that you said the city staff is going to take. How long do you anticipate all that to take? And I note that you said on there that we would have another planning commission hearing. I think we've already had one. Is that, is that a hearing to take action? Or is that a study session? Or, and, sorry, a couple bunch of questions together. But the last one is, are you intending to also address the issue of home sizes and bring that all forward together? Or are you going to take lot splits separately?
So the last question first. Yes, we intend to do both at the same time. So lot splits and the house size issue. And I think what we'd like to do is go back and study the issue in more detail with the planning commission. This is a very significant issue for everyone in our community that owns a single-family house. I mean, it affects your ability to buy your property values, things like that. So we want to be very thoughtful in our approach. And to do that, it requires a good deal of research and discussion in the community. And so that's what, we want to foster that discussion. So we want to go to the planning commission, have another study session. So present them with a lot of information. There's a tremendous amount of information out there, and other cities are doing certain things. We have to find out what works for us. So we'd like to go back to the planning commission, have a study session, and then go to formal action with the planning commission. So I figure two to three meetings. Again, that depends on the planning commission, too, and the public comment that they get. Then we would be ready to go to the city council. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking winter, sometime in the winter or after the first of the year, we'll be able to move forward with this.
Okay. So, so based on that, you would expect that the staff's going to recommend an extension?
Oh, yes, yeah. We would need an extension within the 45 days, yes, absolutely.
It's our intention to have the extension on your very next agenda.
Okay. And that's just rather, and we can't, we can't do a long-term urgency ordinance right now. We have to do the first one, then come back and ask for the extension. Is that the-
45 days is all you can do tonight.
I see.
And then at the next extension, you can go long enough to get us to where we believe you could have a chance to do the public process, adopt whatever changes that the council wants to adopt, and have them take effect.
Okay. Sounds good. Matt?
Yeah, just one other question, and that has to do with flag lots. And they're included in this. Is that, I want to put this question. If, if one had currently, say, a 12,000-foot lot and wanted to create a flag lot, that's getting swept up into this, not because it's necessarily 5,000 square feet, but just because it's a flag lot?
Yes.
Do we have those situations in town?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, one other question. I'm looking at the, the study session that you had with the planning commission, I guess, a few weeks ago. There's a chart here that talks about single-family lot size and with pre and post 2011. And it says, pre 2011, existing lots, 5,000 square feet. And then it says 50-foot width. And then it says lots with 0 to 19.9, 10,000 square feet, 65-foot width. Does that mean that if someone had a 10,000-square-foot lot today with 100 feet of frontage, that they could split it into two 5,000-square-foot lots at 50 feet?
Yes.
All right. What was, I'm just trying to understand the old regulation. Were most 10,000-square-foot lots in, then required to be 65 feet wide?
Before, in, before 2011, yes. So that was before. After 2011, it went to the 5,000 feet and the lot width was, is smaller.
All right. So if tomorrow, I have a lot that's 12,000 square feet, it's 100 feet wide. And let's suppose for a moment that this urgency ordinance goes into effect, and I want to split it into two lots, equal size, 6,000 square feet, with 50-foot width. Can I do that?
No.
Okay. Because it's got to be-
Got to be 65?
It's got to be 65.
And at least 20,000 square feet.
The total.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Through, through the chair?
Thank, yeah, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick questions. One is, Al, my understanding is that the flag lot change that Matt was talking to you about, staff does actually have discretion under the current rules to recommend non-approval of creation of flag lots. But this would essentially just strengthen it and make it a, you just can't create a flag lot. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. The other question I had is sort of following off on something that Ron said. What is the likely impact of this proposed change on any kind of pending transaction? In other words, a piece of property that changed hands recently in anticipation of doing a split, and now all of a sudden, if we enact this ordinance, it will not be able to make a split?
That's right. So any current application that does not conform to the new standards would not move forward. It would not conform to the standards adopted by the city council as part of the urgency ordinance.
And, but I take it from that, that, I mean, that could, could create negative financial impact for whoever sold the property. Maybe this is Greg Rubin's questions. Does that expose us to legal liability risk?
Well, I, I don't. You have, you have absolute authority under the state law to enact urgency ordinance like that's being proposed tonight. The, by nature, they are temporary, and it gives the council and the, and the city the opportunity to review and study. So because they're not permanent, there's no liability for that reason. And there's also, of course, general zoning and police power control that a city has over zoning and development standards in town. So when someone does not have a vested right to develop, they don't have a vested right to any particular rule or regulation that may exist at the, even at the time they file an application.
Thank you.
With that said, if I may add, I think there's one situation in town where there's already been an approval in the White Oaks area. That decision may or may not be appealed by folks in the neighborhood. But these new regulations in either regard would not apply to that situation. We simply don't have the legal authority to take new regulations and apply them to an application that was already approved.
Thank you, Jeff. Bob?
A legal question for Mr. Rubens. This requires a four-fifths vote?
That's, that's correct.
So the city manager indicated that on July 11th, we'd be hearing this again. Is it going to require a four-fifths vote, then?
Yes, it will to extend.
Okay. Thank you.
And so the plan is, we'll see how the vote goes tonight. And depending on how the vote goes tonight, we'll either put it on the agenda for July 11th, or we'll, we'll look for a time when everybody's back in town-
Okay, so a special meeting.
To extend it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. Any other questions for Al? Okay, thank you, Al. Now is the time for public comment. I have a number of speakers on this item. I'd like to remind folks that public comment is limited to two minutes. And I ask, out of respect for the other speakers, that you keep it to two minutes. You'll see a green light, which will then turn to a yellow light, indicating it's time to wrap up, and then a red light when you're done. I don't want to cut people off, but I will. Tonight, we have a, we have a busy agenda, and I got to keep things moving along. So our first speaker tonight is Joe Ravella, followed by Betsy Byer. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Ravella. I've been a resident in town here for 54 years. And I grew up on Carmelita Drive. I'm also a builder in town and I built homes up and down the peninsula for more than 30 years. I'm not in favor of citywide moratorium. I see a necessity for 50-foot-wide lots. And I think in most cases in areas around town, these lots fit the neighborhood, as we have. We have them all throughout the neighborhoods. I do see a problem in a few areas, specifically Carmelita. The lower part of Carmelita where there was, 100% of the lots were all large since there's been a subdivision since, in the last few months, I think. And maybe a few other streets around town. And I think staff could look into zoning a few of these areas differently where this occurs. It may be only a single block or only one or two streets in town. Most towns have similar zoning ordinances. The lower part of Vedred Road in Redwood City, those lots are not subdivisible. But in the other areas where Redwood City with lots, where there is 50-foot-wide lots, they're able to split the lots. So I don't think it needs to be a citywide, you know, moratorium. I think it can be looked at each individual area, whether it's a block or, you know, a specific area. San Carlos doesn't have very many areas like Carmelita. There's only a few. I don't even know if there's more than two. Just to touch on a couple other things. I'm already yellow. I got 16 seconds. I personally have not done a lot split in San Carlos. We purchased property, if we can, a single house was built across two existing lots. I later tear the house down and build two lots because that property has already, always been two lots since the original subdivision was done.
I could ask you to please finish your last thought.
I'll wrap up right now. Most scenarios, we talk to people. Most, most scenarios, people want larger homes. And they want to be in and around downtown where those lots are 50-foot wide, whether the schools or just being around downtown. So in conclusion, I think looking at all the different areas in town and changing the zoning in a few areas may be necessary, but not a blanket change to 70-foot, 75-foot wide and minimum lot sizes of 10,000 feet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Betsy Byer, followed by Richard Archilla. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Betsy Byer. I'm a resident in San Carlos on Cedar Street. And I urge you guys to please vote to have this ordinance or this urgent ordinance approved tonight. It's not gonna, it's not a final decision. It's something that's temporary, as Al said, and that more thought can be put in it. I live next door to something that's happening, that is 10,000-square-foot lot, wanting to go to 2,500 and be a flag. I own a precious 10,000-square-foot lot, and my beautiful lot will look at building, one full side of building with a 10-foot corridor in between. This is just unheard of. So I'll move, and then another split could happen. And then next to me is 10,000 square foot, so they could split. So we could all have six homes where three homes were. So I urge you tonight just to take some time, vote for this, let the, the city planning do their due diligence, and look at what will happen and who will leave, who will stay, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So it's either Richard or Ricardo Archilla, or Archilla, and followed by Gina Azari. Is Ricardo or Richard here? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Gina Azari, San Mateo County Association of Realtors. We oppose this measure, and we're hoping you will decide not to support it because when an individual moves into the property, they, they, they very well might have purchased that property with that expectation that they have the right. This is a taking. And I think we need to take it very seriously when we take away property rights from, from our residents. In addition, there happens to be a slight shortage, housing shortage right now. And that's something that I think we also should take into consideration that in 2011, when you made this decision, we didn't have such a tight housing shortage. Right now, we do. And this is the wrong direction to go in. We do need to encourage more housing. We do need to encourage more housing. But I think first and foremost, the fact that it's a taking is something we need to look at very seriously. So we we definitely oppose it, and we hope you will oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Meg Winslow, followed by Tom Durden. Good evening.
I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous. But I visited San Carlos in 90 on July 4th. Burton Park. Loved the town, couldn't get into it, moved to Redwood City. Finally purchased a house in San Carlos in 97, remodeled in 2001, adding 400 square Remained one story, and I sort of disagree with some of the realtors that are talking now. I think building is at capacity. Realtors must sell what's available. When I was looking in San Carlos in 97, there were three to five houses that I could look at. That's that was it. We may have an excess, and I don't mean this in a nasty way, but we may have an excess of realtors right now. And I really don't mean it, no, just as far as like schools. Schools, when we had not enough teachers, the Canyota College, they, you know, made a lot of teaching credentials, you know, and we cranked out a lot of teachers. And then there were a lot of teachers. Right now, we're in a another dirge of teachers again. It's, I think you could say the same thing for realtors. I don't mean an insult at all. I also wanted to say I'm surprised that so many were people were concerned about Black Mountain properties, building in the high capacity. That was a real concern for the council and everything. Yet we're increasing the housing density in tracks that were determined by previous plat maps, expected to not compromise the safety and city character. I also wanted to say I'm getting a little nervous. And the red, am I done?
If you could just finish your final thought.
The other thing is that when you changed, when we all as a city looked at police and fire, we had to outsource, we had to downsize, and all of you convinced and encouraged us that it was going to remain safe and the integrity of the town would be intact. That was reversible. If you found out that wasn't true, you could change it. We could find more money, and you could not outsource things. The changes that are being proposed now are not reversible. And that's all I can think of. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Excuse me. If I could ask the audience, it's not appropriate to be responding to people's comments. Our next speaker is Tom Durden, followed by Kevin O'Connor. Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Durden, live on Carmelita, am a Realtor. And was the chair of the Political Action Pact for the Board of Realtors for 15 years, and nobody's more passionate about private property rights than myself. But unfortunately, in many cases, one person's rights infringes on another person's rights. And that's, of course, why we're all here, is for you gentlemen to enact this moratorium so you can sort out this dilemma and decide which which one of the two controversial situations should win out and should be appropriate. And so I admire the fact that you're willing to take this on as a moratorium. I admire the fact that you're willing to sort this out to everybody's best advantage. In many cases, a compromise, somebody wins and somebody loses a bit. But unfortunately, that's the way democracy enacts, and I admire the fact that you're willing to take it on, and I would be very happy to help in any way I can or could. And God bless you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kevin O'Connor, followed by Jeffrey Kaiser. Good evening.
Great. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and want to go on the record, not anti-remodeling. There's definitely a need to remodel some of these homes, but two giant houses are not an appropriate replacement for an existing single home on a tiny lot. I live on White Oak, right near where the one was approved, and those are going to be completely out of place, but that ship has sailed. This is definitely, it seems from emails and other things I've seen, a loophole that developers are exploiting as well as realtors. And really, I was at several of the planning commission meetings. They've talked about changing the character of the neighborhood, which I agree with. And the planning commission said they didn't really agree with the development that we looked at on on White Oak, but that their hands were tied. So I just encourage to do the research, put the moratorium on, and then settle it out. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Kaiser, followed by Yvette Royce. Good evening.
Good evening. I also live on Carmelita. We're aware that staff has been asked to go back and research some of the issues related to lot splits, housing needs, et cetera. What we do believe, what was mentioned tonight, that the a pending or lot split application will soon be forthcoming for a house that's in the middle of our block. We believe this would have irreparable damages to the character of the neighborhood, essentially the reason why we all bought on that street. And therefore, we support moving back these ordinances or these items back to the pre 2011 timeframe until it all gets sorted out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvette Royce, followed by Brett Cowan. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am in support of this urgency ordinance on lot splitting in order for the council and also the planning department to have time to sit down and review the concerns of the city's residents. From my own personal involvement with the matter, I am not happy, as was just mentioned, that an imminent lot split is targeted for the middle of my neighborhood. It chops up the lots that are there right now, and it gives a whole different feel to the street. The street eludes a feeling of openness and peacefulness and country feel. In fact, I often see many people walking down the street just because of the feeling they get from walking on that street. And I'm concerned, as was just mentioned by Jeffrey, that this imminent lot split on our street is going to happen. I feel like it's kind of in-between timing as far as when the ordinance will actually be ironed out, the new ordinance, and right now. So my concern is, is this going to happen? I don't really understand how we can put a stop to that, but it could be irreparable damage, and I'm just hoping that maybe there's some way that we can look into having that not happen, especially if the law changes right after it does happen. I'd be frustrated. I continue to question the need for the urgency. I think we've kind of talked about this, about needing more homes. Fine. I think I understand that there are in the late hundreds of apartments slash condos being built in San Carlos over the next year and a half. So at least there will be opportunity to live in San Carlos, but at some point, as someone mentioned, there is got to be a point where we're maxed out with houses as well. I don't think we just go chopping up blocks to get more houses.
If I could have you finish your thought.
I'll finish now. Part of the charm of San Carlos is the diversity of the neighborhoods. I'd like to see that continue. I believe it's a value to the city to have a mix of different kinds of living opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brett Cowan, followed by Steve Gadekian. Good evening.
Good evening. Brett Cowan, 16-year resident of San Carlos, homeowner since 2003 and 2009, and my current location on Cedar. So reason I'm here is the Cedar Street potential lot split that was mentioned a little bit ago by Betsy, one of my neighbors. You know, I know when you look at the map, a half a dozen since 2011 doesn't seem to be a lot of data points, and you question how big of an issue this really may be, you know, but each one of these has its own story to it. And I think the impact on the individual neighborhoods and the streets as these are coming about now, and as we see the trends with housing prices and the direction it's gone, you know, the question is, where are we on the curve in terms of seeing more of these? So I applaud the planning department and the planning commission, as well as the city council, for at least taking a look at this issue. I think, you know, it seems very reasonable to have a temporary moratorium while the issue is studied, while we come out with some type of resolution that, you know, weighs all the pros and cons for everyone. I'd also like to comment, I think there, you know, there's a clear difference in this case between homeowners who live in San Carlos for the long run and developers who are doing these lot splits, right? You don't have individual homeowners who plan on living in one of the properties, generally speaking, coming in and proposing to make their lot smaller. This is, you know, these are looked at by developers. The the whole economics behind it, I think, has changed pretty radically in the last few years, which is causing, you know, the effect that we now see. And so it seems very reasonable to take a pause, take a look at that. You know, with the local developer comments, somebody referenced the blog post from last fall, which one developer said, obviously, we're in this to make money, not making our home. There's another developer who said, who basically, you know, agreed that when they were proposing Meridian 25 project that's that's up right now, in terms of commercial project, they said that, you know, if residents, city residents are upset about minor subdivisions and flag lots, which we've already allowed, you know, what's going to happen when they find out about this variance is being requested, which further worsens our daily lives? So the implication is developer understands that a lot split worsens our lives, right? But they have an economic incentive to do so, so.
If I could have you wrap up.
Yeah. So we're not anti-development, I think, in terms of the neighbors, but we would like to take a look at this and figure out what's fair for everyone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Steve Gadekian, followed by Jeffrey Craighead. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this topic. I'm also one of the residents on Carmelita. I just recently purchased on that street, and with the intention to live on that street because of its charm and its character, it was something that my wife has always longed. She grew up in San Carlos. She always wanted to live on that street, and when the opportunity arose, we were thrilled to be able to take advantage of that. I think, you know, I'm not going to say much more than what my neighbors have already said. Everyone's been very articulate about this topic, and and I just want to express my support for this new measure, and I look forward to participating in the process as the council and as the planning commission further examines this topic and hopefully comes up with new standards that considers not just the immediate vicinity of the home, but the the street overall in the neighborhood to preserve the the character and the charm and the pattern of the neighborhood. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Craighead, followed by James Sherba. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, all of us, Mayor, council members. I'm Jeff Craighead. I live in Redwood City. I have lived in San Carlos on many different occasions. I have a real estate office in San Carlos. One of the things I want to point out to you is that in the state of California, right now, we're short 1.1 million housing units. We need to build 269,000 of these every year. We're only on track now to build 169,000. You can see from the housing shortage in San Carlos where we're at, for example, in White Oak, the average house is 1,200 square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath on a 50 by 100 lot, 5,000 square foot lot. It's 75 years old. Average house is 54. They've started 1.3 million. It's not a hot market. It's just a ridiculous one. And you got to realize that it's supply and demand, and if you do anything to limit the supply, then you're going to be in a situation where you're going to have more and more renters just priced out of the market and priced out of San Carlos. So I ask that you reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jim Sherba, followed by Rod Lecia. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll speak specifically to the approval last week of construction of two massive houses at 2115 White Oak Way. We spoke of it a little bit earlier, as seemingly squeaking under the wire here. A lot split was approved earlier before that against overwhelming neighborhood opposition at a planning commission meeting. More generally, though, this type of neighborhood destruction is happening all over areas of San Carlos comprised of traditional homes. These two houses are completely out of character for White Oaks. A criterion for design review states that new construction blend with the existing area. How completely out of character can a massive multi-story farmhouse and an equally huge bungalow house be in an area of modest, single-story ranch-style homes? The planning commission stated that they must approve the project because the city might be sued and that the proposal met all building code requirements. I say the city also has a legal vulnerability because the commission clearly didn't follow the criterion that new projects must blend with the existing neighborhood and not overwhelm as this project does. The approval results in a loss of neighborhood charm and a privacy and sunlight for present owners. It'll exacerbate an already critical parking problem and add even more traffic on a narrow street serving as the main conduit to White Oak School one block away. Residents voiced it loud and clear three weeks ago. The blighting of our neighborhoods needs to stop. We're fed up with neighborhood destruction and loss of value by allowing lot splits and construction of McMansions adjacent to our modern homes, our modest homes, excuse me. Developers, realtors, and contractors may oppose a desperately needed moratorium and reconfiguration of building codes. However, they move on and aren't left with the detrius created by the current defective codes. Residents stay on injured and suffering the loss of quiet enjoyment of our properties and neighborhoods. I don't know of anyone who says they can't still operate in San Carlos, but with regulations fair to all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, it's not a pep rally. It's a city council meeting. The next speaker is Rod Lecia, followed by Raymond DiMattei. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've never spoken before, counsel, before. I may be nervous. I'm not even going to look at the light. I'm going to read, so I make sure I get everything in.
All right. Welcome.
You can stop me. On March 14th, 2016, I submitted an application for a flag lot, minor subdivision, and it's identified as PLN 2016 000040. The project has been deemed complete and is now well into the 50-day review period prescribed by the Code 1724110. My project must be exempted from the requirements of any proposed revisions resulting from this urgent ordinance. I have spent significant resources to this effort and have made decisions based on existing codified requirements at the time the city fees were paid for in advance. Minor, excuse me. Your decision to approve this emergency ordinance will create an extreme financial hardship and damage to me. Any existing in-process applications, whether mine or others, must be considered under the current codes. Otherwise, the city council can change its rules anytime it doesn't like what someone has brought forth legally as an appropriate project to build. The city completed zoning amendment studies in 2011 and has had five years to research and understand the impacts of the subdivisions and flag lots in RS 6 district. The fact that I may be the first to employ a flag lot solution explicitly defined in Section 184120 and 184120B of the district is not a valid reason to change the rules in midstream. This action before you is simply a taking of government, excuse me, the action before you is simply a taking by government of development rights from property owners disguised under the urgency policy action requested. Requesting more time to assess items which have already been thoroughly reviewed and approved during the 2011 code subdivision and general plan amendment cycle is not necessary. Since May of 2015, I have consulted with five different helpful and well-informed staff members to, excuse me, to confirm specific information related to flag lots in the RS 6 district.
If I could have you please wrap up.
I will. At no time has any one of these staff personnel informed me that a flag lot cannot be created in the district, nor that specific lot configuration is either being reviewed or should be reviewed by staff commissions for possible elimination as an approved configuration. Clearly, that information would have influenced my financial decisions. The city has had 13 months since May 2015 to once again review potential impacts of codified flag lots based on my initial contact with them. I strongly disagree that any additional time extension for this review is required. I urge you to not adopt this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Raymond DiMattei. And if I could ask for clarification, I have two speaker cards, Bill Curry and Jon Stewart, who didn't put a number on their card. Are you wishing to speak on this item? Yes? Okay. And Bill, are you? Okay. All right, sir.
Okay. Dear council members and mayor, I'm a longtime resident and homeowner. My neighborhood and home will be soon impacted by a developer who last Monday was given the okay to subdivide and replace what is a single-story home with two-story homes that will impact the traffic, the parking, the look of my neighborhood. And personally, I will lose my afternoon sun, my privacy, view of trees and shrubs that graced our neighborhood. The planned houses will not fit in with the look of the White Oak Way. They're all ranchers, and these are going to be two-story homes. Its development goes, if it goes to forward, as evidently I can't stop it, and I feel a victim of this. I have to rearrange the interior of my home so I can live in peace, and my house will lose its value, and I'll be darkened forever. I believe my property rights are under attack by a developer and Realtor who seeks the profit due to the generous building codes that exist in San Carlos. By the way, we talked about size lots, but we didn't talk about density. Back in 2011, you couldn't build a house more than 40% of the lot. Now it's 50%. If you look at a scale or an outline of what that looks like, it's a big difference. There's no other neighboring city that has such high density in its building codes around our city, and these lot, and they don't permit the size, small-size lot splits that are now going on. San Carlos is now an open hunting ground for developers and realtors who seek to double their profits. And as a resident, I ask the council, you know, who does it represent? Does it represent the homeowners who vote and pay for their property taxes, or those who stand to profit at the expense of the citizens in San Carlos? We only ask, if you're going to build a big house, make sure the lot size is big. And when you cram a large house into a small lot, you lose trees, gardens, playing space for children, parking space, and you gain crowded small streets that we have, packed, impact schools. crowded, small streets that we have, packed, impact schools, water, sewer lines.
Please finish your thought.
Okay. And we don't want a city of compacted, glorified, tract homes. And I would suggest maybe you ought to, you know, issue free hard hats to the people in the neighborhood of San Carlos, because when we travel down the streets, I can barely miss a debris box, a dump truck, a bulldozer, and a contractor's truck, because they're all cluttering up our streets.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker tonight is Jon Stewart followed by Bill Curry. Good evening.
My name's Jon Stewart. I'm an architect in town on Laurel Street. I've been here for 34 years. I lived here for about 15 years. My client purchased 1942 Carmelita for $2.8 million a few weeks ago. Before we, before he purchased it, I went to talk to the planning department. I talked to Andrea about a tree removal, and she mentioned nothing about anything coming up. And all of this has been really sudden to me. I mean, I've been an architect here forever, and everything's just like a wave that nobody knew that anything like this was happening. And it's also very interesting that Tom Davids, the prior mayor, owned the lot and sold the lot to my client, and he wanted a quick close. Now, we will be prevented from developing the lot for up to 10 months. I also wanted to mention that I was on the task force in 2011 that studied these issues for five or six months, along with Al Savae and Debbie Nelson and a lot of other people. So, this is all very sudden. You have a mechanism to monitor what gets built in San Carlos as part of the design review process, and I'm in agreement with changing some of those rules back to where they were and possibly putting in a FAR limit. I think that would be a good idea so everybody knows what's allowed. So, I'll be the first person to not use all my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker card I have tonight is for Bill Curry. Good evening.
Hello, mayor, council members. How you guys doing today? Thank you for having us. For those who don't know, I'm president of Samhain County Association of Realtors, and it's on their behalf that I speak tonight. I have personal issues about this, but I'll try and keep it on that level. Obviously, you've heard some of the conversations about more housing. I'm against the measure both for SAM-CAR because dividing lots to 5,000 square feet is, as a contractor at various points, that's about the lowest you want to go, is 5,000 square feet. I think in terms of the large houses that are being put on the lots, that's a building approval process, an architect process. I don't know if this is the right venue to deal with oversized lots for a neighborhood. I've worked in different neighborhoods. Foster City, for example, they try to keep uniformity, and lots of other cities do. And there's lots of ways to do it, but lot size is not the one. I had to get up to speed pretty quickly on this particular issue. It seems like it concerns one particular lot, and I think it's a very bad idea to have an ordinance that's really addressing just one person. I don't know if that's entirely the case, but that's my sense of it right now, that it came to the forefront because of this one lot. 5,000 square feet, that's a good, that's a reasonable number. I don't think the council should pass an ordinance that changes it from what it is, and we need to stay with that. And if there's another way of dealing with oversized houses, it's crowding. We all drive down these streets. Local resident, myself, I've been here 20 years. I know what it's driving. And I want to say one other thing. 59 years ago, Samhain County was a totally different place. It has changed tremendously in that time, and I've been here the entire time. It's going to be entirely different 30 years from now. So, although none of us really like change, it's something that's going to happen, and we should try and do it in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Okay.
We do have a request from Councilmember Olbert asking another question.
Okay. Chair, could I make a motion to close the public hearing?
You may. Go right ahead.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Mark, do you have a question of staff, or do you want to wait till we have a motion and participate during discussion?
Actually, this is a question for staff, although I do have some comments to make after the motion that you were describing, Mr. Mayor. My question actually is for Mr. Rubens, and it was sparked by some of the comments made by public speakers. Greg, do we have any flexibility, and if so, what are the implications, to structure the revision to the ordinance in such a way that properties that have changed hands already are, I don't know, exempted, treated differently, what have you?
You do have some discretion to do that, probably with the mechanism of an effective date for, in other words, you could make the effective date, some date within the 45 days. That would be the mechanism if it was the judgment of the council not to apply the proposed urgency ordinance to parcels that already have a pending application or are near an application.
So, for example, I just want to make sure I understand, if a motion were to be made and sustained, that we make the effective date today, that would be something we could do tonight?
The motion before you and the resolution, excuse me, the urgency ordinance before you tonight, it would make it effective on approval tonight.
Oh, I see. Perhaps a different question is, what is the impact of this change if it is approved by the council on property that has already changed hands?
The effect is the new zoning comes into effect immediately, and while the council is studying it, presuming it gets extended during that timeframe, the new development standards would apply. And then, once a permanent ordinance comes forward, those new rules would take effect.
Okay. I have to admit now, I'm a little bit confused. So, if I hypothetically sold a property that was 12,000 square feet last week, and we adopt this ordinance tonight, am I barred from splitting the property?
Effectively, you are, yes.
And how does, how does changing the effective date affect that outcome?
Well, maybe I misinterpreted your question, but because it's an urgency ordinance, you have the ability to incorporate an effective date if it was the council's desire to not have it take effect immediately, is what I was trying to say.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Matt, are there additional questions? Matt, go ahead.
So, mine would also be for the city attorney, I believe, and that is if we're interested in having this not applicable to someone who is already in process. So, if somebody has an application that's in process, they've paid fees, and how do we structure this to address that kind of situation?
The way I was suggesting would be to exempt, make the effective date, and then try to fashion an exemption in the urgency ordinance that has it applied to applications that occur after a specified date. That's the way you would do it if it was the judgment of the council.
That's not what I'm asking for. It sounds to me like we've got, from one of the speakers, they already have an application in process. They've paid fees out in advance, and they have an application in process. Would this affect that?
Yes, it would.
That's what I'm asking for, is how do we have it, you know, if we make a discussion here on the dais after the motion, if, let me finish, because if we make a, if we do a motion and a second, and then we go into discussion, and during the discussion, there's a majority of us who feel like, you know, this isn't fair to apply this to somebody who's already paid fees, has an application in process, so we don't, so we want to create an exemption. What I'm looking for is guidance of how we would create that exemption and to what date would we have to specify the exemption.
Well, I think the, the way to do it is, as much as you suggested, you would say that the ordinance applies immediately to anybody who, to new applications that have not been deemed complete. That's how you would have to do it. But I want to make it clear that just because someone has applied does not give them a vested right to any type of approval, because they still have to go through the approval process. So, I think the way that, and there's another opportunity to do what perhaps you're suggesting, Councilmember Growcott, is because we do have to extend this within 45 days, and you could provide us with direction to look at that issue before it comes back for an extension.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Yeah, just a couple. To follow up on Matt's question, let's be specific. The property that was just purchased, Tom Davids' whole property, is there an application pending? There are no applications pending on that piece of property? Okay.
No application.
All right. And then, the second question I have, Greg, the, the topic came up a few times during public comment about this constitutes a taking. Can you give us some guidance on that? Is it a taking? And if it isn't, what is a taking?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm trying hard not to treat this as a hypothetical instead of focusing on any particular application or potential application. But generally, vested, the taking occurs if the council were to change the rules after somebody had a vested right to develop. Generally, vested right to develop is obtaining a final approval that would allow you to proceed with development. A lot of times, on a simple application, that is a building permit. On a more complex one, it might be approval of your subdivision. And then, after you have that, the approvals are implementing that prior action. That doesn't mean that you're entitled to any particular design or anything like that after the final action takes place, but basically, takings occur after, could only occur if there was a vested right that had accrued to the particular development application.
So, if I simply bought the property last week and paid for it, and I'm now the owner, but I haven't done anything with it, and this moratorium goes into effect, that's not a taking?
No, no vested right. And in my opinion, there's not a vested right from someone who's filed an application. You don't have a right to any particular zoning, and the paying of the application fee does not create a vested right. You still have to go through a process and get the vesting, get the approval of whatever you're proposing.
So, it's the approval that creates?
The vesting.
The vesting. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ron. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion if anyone would care to make one.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt, are we introduce ordinance number?
Yeah, this is approving an urgency ordinance, because we don't have to go through the introduction.
It says on here, number, following the guide. Okay. An urgency ordinance to the city council, city of San Carlos pursuant to government code section 65858A, amending municipal code sections 18.04.030 and 18.41.020, imposing interim development standards addressing lot size, lot width, and flag lots within the RS6 single-family zoning district.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a competing motion.
Please do.
I would like to basically follow Ron's motion, but put a caveat on it that it would only come into effect for properties that are purchased on or after today.
Okay. Do I have a second? I don't hear a second. So, we'll go back to discussion on Ron's motion. Do I have any discussion? Bob?
Well, sort of feel like Mr. DeRidon in effect, because my background is construction and points that were made tonight. Certainly, in fact, Mr. Collins indicated it early on in the evening. We need more housing. I think the difficulty here is that the type of housing is that we're getting, perhaps some folks feel, doesn't match up with the neighborhoods. Secondly, Mr. Smith or Mr. Jones may own a piece of property and decide to split it and live in one house and sell the other one, but I don't believe that that's been happening too often here either. Another situation that's come up, to the gentleman who indicated that the city council, you know, it sort of can't change the, implying that we can't change the rules on this. Fortunately or unfortunately, the city council has a lot of leeway in a lot of areas. And if tomorrow, there's five other people here, they could change it back. They could change something else. It's in the code. It's an ordinance. It's a resolution, but it can be changed. I think this is a step that we need to take for a short period of time, to take a breath, to see why in 2011, and I know why we did it, because I was on the council at the time, nobody was building anything in 2011, or very little, because the economy was just trying to recover. And now, it's exactly the opposite. As Mr. Craig had said, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. And I think it's time to take a breath and take a short hiatus. Staff is going to come back with some new ideas. I have a feeling we're going to have a compromise that perhaps neither side would like, and that's possible. But I think we need to look at this, and I think we need to spend some time on it. And that's why I'm going to be supporting this resolution for a hiatus and a urgency ordinance tonight.
Thanks, Bob. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go back a little bit further. I wasn't on the council in 1990, but I was on the planning commission, and it was during that time that people were complaining about, about houses being built or the lack of them. And so, we crafted on the planning commission for the city council to approve a lot division, lot subdivision standards, and those were what were in effect until November of last year. And at the time, it was, as you've seen, if you've looked at the, at the way it was written before, it was 40% lot coverage. And once that was passed, probably within six months of that passage, of course, I didn't have email then, thankfully. I got phone calls, and people stopped me in the street and said, "What did you do? What did you think you were doing? People are building these mega houses." And that was under the old rules, and it was 25 years ago. So, I'm just saying that to give some perspective. Now, having said that, I am, as evidenced by a couple of decisions that we've made on this council, I'm a very strong supporter of property rights. And had this issue not come up, I probably would not have been in favor of a moratorium. I have, I have friends that live in this town that have subdivided their lots, some of them, some of them sold them. People have property rights in their sacrosanct, and it bothers me a little bit when people say, "What, are you worried that we'll be sued?" No, I'm not. I mean, fine. If we're sued, we're sued. But I don't think anybody in this room wants us to deliberately taunt someone who has those rights, those rights and laws that we passed and we made a decision on, to then go against our own, our own rules. We all took an oath to uphold all the laws of this state, this city, and this country. And we can't make arbitrary decisions and say to people, "You can't do what we've already codified." So, on a level of principle, I don't think it's a good idea to have this moratorium. However, because these standards have changed over the years, and because times have changed, and because people are building larger homes, I do think that we do need to take a breath, take a pause, as Mr. Grisilli said, and take a look at them. No one, not everyone is going to be happy with what comes out at the end of this process. I am sorry, and I apologize to the purchaser of Mr. David's property. You may have to wait a little bit longer, but we need to get it right. I also think, as evidenced by the people in this room, people are very interested in this issue. There are a lot of people There are a lot of people that could not be here tonight, or either watching on TV or they had other commitments, who could not be here, but they're no less interested in what is going on. And when this many people in this town say, "We need to look at this," then my decision is made for me. Even though, as I said, I'm philosophically opposed to it, I think we need to take that pause and take a look at it and rethink the whole process. In the end, we may make no changes at all. I don't want to, I'm not going to promise anybody anything, because I don't know how I'll vote at the end. So how I vote tonight is not indicative of how I'll vote down the road. So I just want people to be aware of that, and it's just not an easy vote for me. It is something that I just think is necessary for the moment, and so I am going to support the moratorium.
Thank you, Ron. Matt?
So in regards to all the things about size of development, size of homes, density, all those kinds of things, I'm not going to make any comment on that, because I'll wait for staff to bring those things to us at the time, and we can look at it at that time, and I can make my comments about that. I think the issue tonight is, do you do a moratorium or don't you? And so I'm just looking at that particular issue. And I'll just say that with regards to what we did in 2009, I believe it was, when we did the general plan update, and, you know, the zoning changes and so forth, this isn't the first time we've run into this kind of issue, where we put something in place as a zoning standard and realized, gee, when you really try to work with that, you end up with this, and people don't like this, and so we have to look at it again. And it's because when you're dealing with the general plan, you're dealing with this huge monster. I've told people this, that I speak to at the coffee shop all the time, because they're asking about some of the buildings in town, and that's what I've told them, is, well, you approve this thing, and then it goes into, it starts working and churning out buildings, and you go, wow, really? I didn't know that. And I could admit, as a council member, I didn't know that either. And I can tell you that on my street, in my neighborhood where I live, there was a building that was being proposed, and even the staff, they don't like admitting that they didn't know that, but even on that particular project with what was going on, they even said, wow, you know, we didn't really think of it in that regard on that particular street and so forth. These things happen. You know, you start using something and you realize, wow, we need to take another look at this and take a harder look at it. And I think that's where we are tonight, is we just need to take a harder look at this and do the moratorium, see where we are, and see where we are at the extension point and what we want to do. My only concern, and I don't want to, you know, address my comments to a particular individual, but the fellow that came up and said, "I've got a thing in process, and I've made an application," and so forth, I do think, Greg, I'm not, can't remember exactly how you put it, but if we could, if there's a way we can direct staff to look at some of those, any of those particular kind of applications that we have, and see if we can have something at the 45-day point that might work a little differently. If we could do that, I would appreciate that. I don't think that's part of a motion or anything. I think that's just staff hearing from the council that, yes, we'd like to give consideration to that outside of any kind of motion. Am I right, Greg? Yeah?
Yeah, that's, I'm suggesting that we look at that at the meeting that you decide whether to extend it, which will probably be the July 11th meeting.
Okay. And I think that's a fair compromise to that applicant.
Yeah, I don't have any objection to that. I don't know if others do. Okay.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, a couple of comments. Part of the reason, just in responding to what Matt was saying, part of the reason I made that alternative motion, which, you know, was not supported, and I'm okay with that, but it was the, it was the idea that what we're balancing out here is a complex level of fairness. And for me personally, individuals who have invested significant sums of money and people who have sold property at significant prices, and now, for all I know, may be facing some negative financial consequences because we changed the rules on them after the fact, that concerns me. And that's why I was, I was saying that let's make it applicable simply going forward. And maybe that's something we can address when it comes back for renewal, maybe not. The other comment I wanted to make, just in listening to some of the comments from people in the public, Ron, I agree with completely, this is a very complex issue. There are many, many facets to it. And I would ask folks to remember, who would like to see us ban the splitting of lots completely, ultimately, I'd ask them to remember that this is not just developers, you know, evil developers profiting off of the backs of the community. These are your friends and neighbors who sold property, and basically, if we change the rules on them, there's a situation we may be creating where they won't be able to sell their property for as much as they could otherwise, and as much as they expected to, in good faith. It's almost analogous to, you know, if somebody buys a lot, builds a home on it in anticipation of putting a pool on it, and then we come in and say, "Sorry, no pools allowed anymore," for whatever reason. So I ask folks to just be sensitive to that and to recognize that there are multiple factors here, and there are people who will be hurt regardless of what we do. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I'll just make some brief comments. I, too, am going to be supporting this. I think the reason that we're doing this is there's a larger issue at play, which is that the economy is growing, and the price of real estate five years ago in 2011 was about $500 a square foot for a single-family home, and it's doubled in five years, more so than anywhere else in the country. And not only that, what we see all around us is that a lot of things are changing. You know, there's more traffic on the roads, there's a lot of jobs being created in the area, but that creates a lot of pressure on our town. We, on the city council, believe that there are certain things that are very core about San Carlos, and one of those, first and foremost, is our small-town neighborhood feel. And the feeling that you get in the communities, it's what attracted a lot of people who wanted to move here originally. You know, their kids ran down the block, you know, they held block parties, they really feel at home in their neighborhoods, and it's not surprising that it's a very emotional and visceral reaction when those things start to change. We have to make trade-offs between the rights of property owners to develop their own property and the needs of the overall community, and we have to draw a line, and that line is somewhat arbitrary. But five years ago, we moved that line, and I think that as the economy has grown, the feedback that we're getting, both in terms of the size of homes and lot splits, has been, you moved the line too far. We don't know that for certain, and we need to have a big community conversation, but we've already started that conversation. We've had planning commission hearings, we have our online forum out that, we get a lot of information about it. And so I think the reason that we're taking this action is a recognition that we're listening to people, and that by and large, what we're hearing from people is that in the midst of all this change, they want certain things that are core about the city to maintain. And, you know, they, there are lots of trade-offs, there is a housing crisis, but I personally don't think we're going to solve a housing crisis through individual lot splits, you know, we're doing a lot of other things to do that. So I'm going to be supportive of this. I am very sympathetic to those who, and I know it doesn't come as a lot of solace, I personally think that anybody who has applied and paid fees should have their fees refunded if they, if they're affected by this. There is no good time to make these kinds of changes. There's always somebody who gets caught up in the mix, and, you know, public policy is kind of a blunt instrument sometimes. But I do think that the will of the majority of the residents, from what I've heard, is they want to maintain that small-town community feel, and that this is a step in that direction. So I will, I will be supporting this. And with that, unless there's any other comments, Crystal, could you please call a roll?
This is for urgency ordinance number 1506. So Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess till 8:45 and come back with item 8B. All right. Welcome back. Good evening. We're going to resume and move on to item 8B, consideration of actions for the Meridian 25 office project at 887 Industrial Road. And our presentation tonight will be by... Do we have a staff presentation on Meridian 25?
I was going to intro.
Okay.
I think you've caught a few people out of the room still.
All right. You want to do an introduction, Jeff, or are you, should we wait?
I think we should wait for the community development director, yes. If somebody could go and search the community...
There we go.
There he is.
All right, Al, welcome back. You're up.
Good evening, once again, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight, we're looking at the Meridian 25 office project. And before we get into the presentation, I'd like to make a few introductions. This evening, we have a team of people who are here to present this item and also answer your questions. So Laura Russell is our senior planner and the lead project manager. I'm going to be handing off the presentation to her in just a moment. We have Rebecca Ald, who's our environmental specialist, and she will be covering the environmental component. We have Frederick Venter, and while he won't be giving a presentation, he'll answer any of the questions that you or the public has with regard to traffic engineering. Anna Shimko is our special legal counsel, and Jim Simon is with RSG, an economist, and they did the fiscal impact analysis. In terms of overall public meetings, there's been a lot of community input on this project, but we have spearheaded a number of different meetings throughout City Hall and with various commissions. For instance, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, the Transportation and Circulation Commission, looked at the traffic impact analysis, and the planning commission had a study session, and very recently, the planning commission made a recommendation to the city council. I'm going to come back, I'm going to hand this off now to Laura, and I'm going to come back later to talk about the development agreement and make a formal recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. So most of you are familiar with the project site, but just as a brief reminder, it's an existing industrial and commercial area. It's located .7 miles to Caltrain, so that's about a 13-minute walk. And if you take, if you take commercial to the undercrossing at Arroyo, it's about .4 miles to get to Laurel Street, where you can go in either direction from there. And of course, Highway 101 is located directly adjacent at the rear of the site. The site is 7.9 acres. The general plan designation is general, commercial, industrial, and the zoning designation is the same, GCI, general, commercial, industrial. It's currently developed with six one-story buildings and surface parking and associated landscaping. The total area of those existing buildings is approximately 134,000 square feet. All of the existing buildings, parking, and landscaping would be removed with the Here's the proposed site plan. So you have Highway 101 going across the top of the slide there, and Industrial Road at the bottom. The parking structure goes across the rear of the site, kind of the whole length of it, and the two office buildings are located at the front. There's perimeter landscaping and a central amenity space. There's a couple of indicators there, just to kind of orient the council and members of the public. The city billboard is located at the end of Branston there, kind of to orient people, and then I've indicated where the corner of Branston and Industrial is as well. So this shows the proposed office buildings. They're proposed to be six stories and mirror images of each other. The total floor area of those office buildings is approximately 529,000 square feet. The architecture is contemporary in nature, with glass, aluminum panels, and stone exterior. The rendering on the left is the view from Industrial at approximately the center of the complex. The applicant is proposing an extensive landscaping plan, which is shown on the right and also included in the plan set and in the staff report. The landscaping covers about 23 percent of the site, and that's speaking directly to the actual planted areas, not including some of the accessory walkways and paving that would be associated with that. They're proposing a total of 150 new trees. All of those would be 24-inch box size or larger. All of those would be 24-inch box size or larger. They're proposing 1,510 parking spaces. That's precisely what the municipal code requires for an office complex of this size. The majority of those spaces are located within a parking structure, which has three stories underground, one level directly at grade, and two levels above grade. This is a rendering of the structure from the 101 view with the office buildings behind it. You can see that there's a lot of architectural detail that's been added to the parking structure to integrate it into the office buildings, and there's landscaping associated with the structure itself, as well as between the area, between the freeway and the parking The municipal code also requires bicycle parking. The project slightly exceeds that code requirement. They're proposing 152 short-term spaces, which is basically bike racks, and 80 long-term spaces, which are secure bicycle parking for employees and people that are at the site for longer periods of time. You can see that the bike parking is spread throughout the site with emphasis at the two front corners. So you have pedestrian and bicycle access at those corner points. The applicant is also providing 30 bicycles, separate from their bike parking requirement, and they're proposing and they're doing that as part of their TDM plan. So one of the items before you this evening is the request for the zoning map amendment to change the site from GCI to Plan Development. So if that were approved, the project plans and the Plan Development Plan would become the zoning for the site. The project complies with all of the development standards of the current GCI-based zoning district, except for height. So the purpose of the Plan Development is truly for the opportunity to improve the increased height. So they're proposing 87 feet 3 inches to the top of the parapet and 97 feet 2 inches to the top of the roof screen. Some limited mechanical equipment up to 100 feet may also be allowed if it could be screened and minimally visible. So this rendering shows those two different height limits, so that's a little bit easier to see, with orange being the top of the roof screen and yellow being the top of the parapet. The roof screen is architecturally integrated into the center of the building, and this was a kind of discussion with staff to make sure that the roof screen was integrated and didn't appear obtrusive, but it's in the center of the roof area, and that's the portion that has the larger height. The majority of the buildings would be at the 87-feet parapet height. So I'll turn it over now to Rebecca Ald, who's going to talk about the environmental review portion of the project.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Ald with Lanfair Gregory, primary report preparer for the environmental document, which, as you know, is a mitigated negative declaration, or MND. I wanted to talk briefly about what that is and what that means. So under the governing law, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, an MND is one of the names for the package for the environmental review that's performed. Another one of those names is an environmental impact report, or EIR, and there were some folks that had a false impression that the fact that mitigated negative declaration instead of an EIR was the appropriate package meant that there was not environmental analysis that was performed, and that was not the case. So under SEQA, the package for the analysis does not determine the scope for the analysis, rather the reverse is true. It's the conclusions of the analysis that determine the package. So in this case, new impacts were able to be reduced below significance thresholds through the identification of mitigation measures, and therefore, mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate package. I wanted to stress that a full analysis of all project impacts under all environmental topic areas under SEQA was performed for the project. This included a full transportation impact analysis, otherwise known as a traffic study, which studied the projected conditions with the project under both existing and future cumulative growth conditions in the region. This was included as an attachment to the MND, as it would have been to the EIR, and the scope of the project traffic analysis, as well as the other analyses performed for the project, are the same as they would have been had the environmental review been packaged as an environmental impact report. So to go briefly over what the conclusions were, through the analysis that was performed, we were able to determine that most of the impacts would be below significance levels or reduced to that level through identified mitigation. Most of that mitigation is standard for projects in the region and would include measures to address construction emissions, nesting birds, undiscovered cultural resources, and site-appropriate engineering. Some measures specific to the site include compliance with regulations and processes related to contamination on the site and improvements to enhance the safety at the southernmost driveway proposed for the project. There is one significant impact identified for the project. The traffic study concluded that the project would contribute to regional freeway congestion. This was a citywide impact and would apply to other developments within San Carlos and other jurisdictions within the region. It was previously identified in the EIR for the city's general plan and would not be considered a new impact of the project. So following circulation of the environmental document, there were a few documents that were prepared, and these were included in the packet for this item tonight. I just wanted to briefly note what those were. So there were some comments that were specific to the environmental analysis, and we prepared a memo to respond to those comments and to demonstrate that there were no new items that were raised that would change conclusions in the MND. There were some additional questions, mostly related to the project, but which touched upon issues that could be considered related to the environmental analysis, and a separate Q&amp;A document was prepared to answer those questions on the record, and that also is included in the packet. And finally, there was an errata sheet prepared with minor changes to update the mitigated negative declaration, and specifically, the discussion of the cleanup of contamination on the site, and that the process would be coordinated through oversight by the EPA rather than DTSC. This was coordinated voluntarily by the applicant to address neighbor concerns. So that concludes my summary of the environmental analysis, but as mentioned, I am available to answer questions, and I have my traffic study consultant to support me if needed.
Thank you.
One of the items before you this evening is a development agreement, and state law encourages developers and cities to work together through this development agreement process to make sure that a project fits into the community and that communities are able to see community benefits beyond the boundaries of the project itself. And so this evening, you have a development agreement that is essentially a contract between the developer and the city, and this contract was negotiated by city staff and the developer, and contains a number of community benefits associated with trying to improve the project, but not only that, improve the community. And so I thought I'd walk you through this briefly. As you can see on the screen, there are a number of capital improvement projects associated with the project there. For instance, Commercial Street, new sidewalks, Class III bike lanes, Old County Road continuation of Streetscape improvements with East Side Connect. We came down Old County Road from the greater east San Carlos neighborhood, and this would be a continuation of that. Improved sidewalks, ADA curb ramps at certain intersections. And then there's a public recreational project and infrastructure contribution. That's 3/4 of $1 million that can be used for either one of those areas at council discretion and some public art as well, totaling about $3.625 million. And as we look at some of the reasons for this, and some people have asked, "Well, why Commercial Street?" We got into this conversation at the Planning Commission level, and the question is, "Well, why Commercial Street?" And one of the key issues here is, you know, we have a very significant project located on Industrial Road here, and it'll become really an anchor, an anchor tenant out there, and it's really pioneering development in this area. And the roads and streets, particularly running perpendicular to Old County Road and Industrial, are, you know, some of them don't even have sidewalks. It's a very inhospitable place to walk. As this area transitions from an industrial type of development to this knowledge-based development, we believe, as does the developer, that connecting the disconnected is important. And what we mean by that is, is these people, over 1,000 people, will need to, and we want to encourage them, to use mass transit or public transit. As Laura said, they're just about .7 of a mile away from the Caltrain station. So the closest road to do that would be Commercial Street. Commercial Street connects here. As Laura noted, there's bike racks in here. There would be a crosswalk here, and there's also a bus bay that's located in this location. So that becomes relevant there. It would be a much more safer and pleasant walk to use Commercial Street, we believe, in walking both Branston and Commercial Street. Branston is more heavily industrial. We have C-Mex down at the corner here, so this makes more sense as well. Also, to leverage some of the development projects, the improvements, the capital improvements that we've already made to Industrial and to Old County Road, as I noted, East Side Connect was a big capital improvement project where we improved Old County Road with new sidewalks, bike lanes, new lights and things. And the idea is to connect Terminal Way down to Commercial and have the developer improve this section in conformance with that project. And the other thing is looking into the future. If, you know, it can be argued that there's other streets that maybe we should consider, but in looking out to the very near future, we know now that L3 Communications is going to go on the market in the next year. That's about another eight acres of potential development located here. And that, again, serves to bolster the idea that Commercial Street would then become a good corridor for connecting people down here. Arroyo Street improvements also. The city just finished Arroyo Street improvements located here, so people can walk down Commercial Street, go under the train tracks, cross over El Camino, and get right into our downtown without taking their cars. So those are the reasons that these community benefits are being recommended to the City Council. With that, the Planning Commission recently heard the project and voted 5 to 0 to recommend that the City Council approve the project. They had a number of final actions that aren't before you this evening. What is before you this evening is the environmental document, as noted by Rebecca, the Plan Development ordinance, and the development agreement. And so that concludes the staff presentation, and we're all here to answer questions of the mayor or council.
Thank you. Al, questions for Al and staff? Matt?
Al, can you go back to that map that you just had up for a second? There you go. You mentioned L3. As I was looking at this, I was curious about the location relative to this map of the Kelly Moore site, because my understanding is that also is changing uses, if you will.
It may in the future. So that's another thing that you need to really look at in the future, absolutely.
And where is that relative to here?
That's located right here. So this is about, oh, almost 14 acres, I believe. Kelly Moore is located here, yeah.
So doing these improvements on Commercial Street could have an impact on that future, whatever happens there as well?
Yes, and so from a planning standpoint, if we're thinking out into the future, these potential developments could contribute additional improvements on this road and others in the area.
Okay. And the other questions I had was, so the idea of going from GCI zoning to this PD is merely to change the footprint of the building and then, in changing the footprint to get some amenities of landscaping and other things, we're going to an increased height. So if I understand this correctly, in terms of parking and use intensity of the site, none of that changes by changing this zoning and going to a Plan Development?
That's correct. So the development conforms with all other zoning standards with the exception of height. That's correct.
So in other words, with what we did when we did the general plan back in 2009 and looked at traffic and uses of all these areas and so forth, you know, you try to fit all the pegs in and so that your traffic still works to some degree, understanding that growth is going to impact traffic. But when we did all that, this hasn't changed the way we were thinking, because, again, all we're doing is changing the height, but that height change is not changing use intensity or parking and those sorts of things.
That's right, as well. And so, for instance, the square footage is in conformance, so they could have this amount of square footage. If they weren't asking for the height, they could do it at 50 feet and conform, and then they wouldn't be asking the city. So yes, the general plan, traffic, circulation was all considered with the amount of square footage that is being allowed here. Yes.
And then, so just two more questions. Oftentimes, we're told about housing job balance that we try to keep, and we try to keep it on a regional basis, and then on a local basis as a city, we try to do our part and keep it. What does this project do to that? Do we know?
Well, you know, one of the things, one of the policies that I, that really sticks out in my mind in the general plan when we put it together, and it was very important at the time, I thought, was that the idea that people who live in San Carlos can also work in San Carlos. And so from, aside from the numbers of housing units and that kind of thing, on the other side of the coin is, you know, we have a lot of highly educated folks here, highly skilled people, that have to commute great distances to their jobs. This provides an opportunity to bring those jobs to the city of San Carlos for the residents that already live here. And the idea is to get people out of their cars, and this, that would be exactly what this would be doing, is providing more of these jobs in our community for the folks that have to commute. So that's just the other side of it, but I get what you're going. You were going, "Well, how many houses do we need to build, maybe, and does that impact the number of units?" And our general plan was provided to the folks that give us our numbers for housing, the regional housing needs assessment numbers. So they had all our square footage. We told them, "This is what our general plan says we're going to build," and then they said, "Well, here's how many units you need to build." And that was 526 housing units in the next eight years, let's say, and we're well on our way to do that. So that's the number, at least the regional agencies believe, that we need to build.
However, from a starting point, my impression has always been with San Carlos, actually, that we're on the high side of housing versus jobs. What you're giving me, what you just said, applies more to them looking at us supplying for the region, but if we just looked at San Carlos alone, our starting point, my understanding is, is that we're actually on the high side of housing versus jobs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is this the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the last question is just simply, if we know or have at least, you know, a good idea of the timing of the Holly Street improvement, where we're going to do the work at Holly in 101 versus the completion of this project or the construction of this project?
I'd like to refer that question to Jay Walter, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Council. Jay Walter, Public Works. In answer to your question, we expect to finish the design for the Holly Street improvements at the end of this calendar year, and then we would start the process to advertise the project. This is all provided that we have money in hand to do this, and then we would begin the process of construction. It would probably be in the April-May timeframe that we would actually get underway with a contractor, that is, with money in hand to be able to do that. But that's our schedule right now.
Seventeen.
That's correct, seventeen.
Okay. And then, do we know what their plans are with this project?
The developer is prepared to give a presentation to the City Council as well, and so he would answer that question for you.
Very good. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my question was on the project timeline, so I'll wait till that presentation is made.
Okay. Mark, I believe you have some questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So my first question is, I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more about what the developer is proposing to do to encourage the use of mass transit by the firms that will eventually lease space of the building.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we could either have, the developer does have a presentation and is prepared to do that, and then we can answer more specifically.
Mark, do you want to wait for the developer to give a presentation? Do you have any other questions, the staff, or you want to have that presentation and then you can ask some questions?
I am happy to wait for it, as long as it gets addressed. I have another one related to that, which can also wait. One question remaining for staff at this point, which Matt touched on a little bit in this conversation with, with Al. Do the staff have a sense of both how big and what it would look like for the, for a building to be built that would be the same rentable amount of square feet, but would actually be, not require any exemptions as far as height is concerned? I'm just trying to get a feel for what the thing would look like.
The thing would look a lot flatter and a lot wider, so it would, it would take up a lot more of the property landscaped area that's being provided now. So the intent is to make the footprint small, excuse me, so that there's more land area for landscaping and things like that. So it would be a big, wide, rectangular type, or a couple of different rectangle, rectangle-shaped buildings, and it would cover a lot more of the, of the property.
Okay. And just a brief follow-on to that, that comment for which, thanks. I realize this is a relatively groundbreaking kind of project for San Carlos, but both within the context of San Carlos and the broader region. How does the effectively lot coverage ratio for this project relate to what typically is being done elsewhere and what typically has existed for similar kinds of projects in San Carlos? And do you understand what I mean by lot coverage ratio?
Yeah, I do. And in terms of numbers, I mean, this far exceeds our requirement for lot coverage. I mean, it, it actually is a lot less than our requirement for, our maximum for lot coverage. So, and I think that if you compare it to PAMF, and I was thinking about asking staff to give you a number, and we're prepared to do that, and maybe Laura can do that after I finish, but PAMF is an example of a similar type development, although it's a much bigger project on a much larger piece of land. This is a small, this is about half the size of the PAMF project in terms of acreage, but it would have, at the bigger height, you'd have more area, again, available for other amenities and landscaping along the frontage and things like that. So in terms of theoretically, it's similar to the PAMF project. Other projects like Circle Star, there's more parking. So you'll see sort of, kind of the, it's a little bit more old school in terms of, you know, providing all the parking where you can see it, but it doesn't allow for as much landscaping and things like that and other amenities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did you have any questions, Bob?
I asked staff, and I had a lot of my questions answered already.
So I think we have a question, a presentation from the developer, is that right? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you so much for having, having me tonight. We'll have a little bit of a higher level presentation from me tonight, and then specific questions. We have additional slides. We can dig in deep to any specific areas that, that the council would like to. But I thought we would kind of just start here a little high level. So you've talked a little bit already about where the project's located, or what the project is. Let me tell you a little bit about Windy Hill Property Ventures. So my name is Mike Field. We're a San Carlos property owner, obviously, with this project. We also own and operate multifamily properties up and down the peninsula. We are Bay Area focused, and we don't have any real estate outside of the Bay Area. And our, you know, we try to have really deep relationships in the communities in which we work, and really partner with the communities that we work in. Here tonight is our architect, Craig Armela, with Arc Tech, our civil engineer, Mike O'Connell with BKF, our landscape architect, Carolyn from Gazardo, and our TDM consultant, Jessica Alba. So we have the team here if there's specific questions that they can help with. We've already talked about where the project's located, and what I want to touch on briefly is why did we name it Meridian 25? San Carlos sits perfectly 25 miles from San Francisco and 25 miles from San Jose. This is a tremendous location. It is an untapped location for a commercial office. We're .7 miles to the train. We are just right on and off Highway 101. And by creating an amenity-rich environment and a pedestrian environment, we feel like we can provide the urban benefits of restaurants and train accessibility with some of the more suburban benefits of open space and pedestrian ease. The project is six buildings, as, as city staff talked about. We have 300, 3.5 acres of open space, and to a question that was asked, that's 250% above the required amount of open space. So it's a considerable multiple by being able to go higher that we pick up in open space. And a lot of this open space was focused on the front of the project through working with city staff. They were very concerned with how the project presented itself to the community, and also the standard that the project would set moving forward in this area as further redevelopment occurs. It was very important for them for this pedestrian bicycle accessibility feel, and so you'll see those various pocket parks and things that we'll talk about. The project is, is very exciting. It's environmentally sustainable. It'll support high-wage job industries that currently don't exist here in San Carlos. It'll encourage additional, a commercial development, additional retail on the east side to support the folks who work here, and it'll promote economic revitalization of some of these underutilized parcels. As you see on the slide, Redwood City has numerous successful office campuses, but we feel that our project can be even better than theirs with the accessibility to the train and to downtown, and can bring the economic benefits to San Carlos that Redwood City on just the other side of the freeway is enjoying. And one of the benefits to developing later is that the assessed value of this property will be much, much greater than a project of similar size in Redwood Shores, and so by developing less at a later time, San Carlos is going to get the maximum economic benefit. In addition, the project includes, obviously, community transportation benefits that'll help further connect this area of San Carlos with the downtown. And Mr. Seve talked a little bit about that tonight, and specifically what we're trying to achieve on Commercial Street. So this, this slide is to show the benefits the project is going to have because of its height. And so that's some questions that were asked right out of the gates. So if three and a half acres of open space, one of the key distinctions here is there's very little asphalt, and the question is, where did it go? And the answer is, it's all underground. And so we are three and a half levels of underground parking. In addition to that, the garage itself was heavily overdesigned. So, for example, if you're looking at the garage through the central corridor, Al taught me a trick with the mouse here, through the central corridor, you're, the front of the garage will look like a building. There'll be glass and metal, so you won't see the fronts of cars headlights or whatever. The idea here is to make this garage disappear to the extent possible. So the garage steps, steps down on either end, so this is only one level above grade, whereas this is two levels. And then again, on the other side, it's one level. So rather than see, you know, if you're coming down the freeway, you won't see a two-story wall. You'll see a stair step up, and as you drive down industrial, look, you'll see the stair step up. You see here is the sidewalk that we're going to add rapid flashing LEDs to, to provide for a very quick option. So rather than wait at the stoplight to cross at, at Branston, you'll hit the LED flashers here at this sidewalk, and you'll go right to Commercial Street. In addition to that, there's efficient project circulation. You'll notice at both corner, corners, we have two different pathways here. One is sidewalks for pedestrians, and one is, we call the racetrack for bicyclists, that'll take them straight to the bike racks. Or, as part of our TDM plan, all employees of this project will have the right to take their bike to their desk. That's proven that folks who ride their bikes tend to ride expensive bikes, and they don't want to, in a bike rack on the ground floor. So thinking about how pedestrians and bicyclists come to and enter the project is something that we spend a lot of time with. The project setbacks from the city right-of-way are 200 to 400% of required setbacks. So again, by being able to go vertical, those setbacks are much greater. In addition to that, we cut the front corner of the building away to set it back even further. We put outdoor balconies to make the height feel less, to try and tier the property to the extent possible. In addition, the project has 80% more trees than is required by code. This is the tree planting plan. I affectionately call it a Scott Marster's tree planting plan. For those of you that know Scott, he's very interested in trees. And we worked hard to make sure that there was trees everywhere we could fit them. And specifically, as it relates to screening, you'll notice that the trees along the front of the project are, are designed to grow much larger and to screen at, at a maximum I think that what the landscape plan shows is that this project will be a tremendously beautiful addition to San Carlos, and we feel like we've really gone the extra mile to assure that the landscape will be a major impact and certainly a beautification of this industrial area. Isn't it nice not to see all that asphalt? So this is what the courtyard and general surroundings of the project will look like, and this is it in rendered view. This truly is the way that the, that the Bay Area hopefully will build into the future, that we'll stop seeing these large asphalt areas and we'll start to think about how we can create these pedestrian-rich amenity spaces. This is the gateway to the project, so this is right in between the front two buildings. You'll notice there's a lot going on here. I wish I could say these were all my ideas. Unfortunately, they're not. We worked a lot with city staff, and to create these pocket parks, seating areas, wood benches, stone benches, all these areas in order to invite people to enjoy themselves here and to create that pedestrian feel. This is the corner at Branston. You'll see that there's outdoor benches, there's pathways, there's separate areas for pedestrians and bicyclists, and again, an amenity-rich environment. TDM, so that's our Transportation Demand Management Plan, and this plan achieves something pretty spectacular, which is a 20% trip reduction. For a location like this and a project like this, it is pretty dramatic. We've achieved that through free transit passes for all employees forever, car sharing, bike sharing, shuttles, incentives. All these things are, are TDM measures that are on the table, that we can use and that the city can help implement in the event that we aren't meeting our 20% of requirement. This is the garage. Again, this is an area where city staff had major feedback. You'll see there's, the idea was, the city staff really didn't want this to be an afterthought. They didn't want the drive down 101 to appear as if it were an afterthought to the project. So there's a lot of metal panel to tie into the buildings. There's the metal rail. The trees here are muted here, so you can see, but those will be thick trees. There's the metal climbing walls. All these things, once full, fully immature, will prove to screen the garage and make it really a beautiful, beautiful parking structure, as far as parking structures go. Let's see. Project benefits. So some of that has already been talked about. Property taxes, right now, the site's assessed at about $350,000 a year. The assessment is estimated to be around $4 million at full build-out, of which approximately $560,000 would go to the general fund, a million and a half to schools, et cetera. Economic development, obviously, this area, you know, this will spur some, some other retail uses. It'll help us support other uses in the area. We talked about high-paying jobs. Environmental cleanup. So right now, the site is dirty, like a lot of sites are, and we have a fully executed agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency. They will oversee the remediation of this site as part of our construction. And so that's one of the benefits of redevelopment, is an opportunity to clean the site. We've talked about the Commercial Street improvements and some of the other contributions. One other thing to touch on, and one thing that we, we worked with Planning Commission with, was in making sure that the project was environmentally cutting-edge. So it's a lead silver standard is what we're building to. In addition to that, the project will have solar installed. It'll be plum for recycled water, et cetera. That concludes my presentation. And so, again, we have a very robust package to the extent that there's additional questions, but I know there's a lot of people here, so please let me know what you need.
Thank you very much. Mark, you had some questions for Mr. Field?
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mike, nice presentation.
Thank you.
One thing that I've always been a little bit confused about has to do with encouraging use of mass transit. I was impressed by your TDM plan. But how do you actually, as the owner of the property, get the tenants to actually follow what you're trying to do?
Thank you. So that's a great question. So here's how I've kind of described it, and maybe this helps. It's almost like a deed restriction, in that it runs with the land. So our TDM program, for example, being able, or all employees getting free transit passes, that'll be an exhibit to any lease we execute at the project. The city of San Carlos will have an annual review to make sure that we are achieving those measures. There will be onsite concierge. There will be education classes for employees to make sure they understand their rights under the TDM program. And so all of these measures are put in place to ensure that the program is executed properly, and then the city, of course, has oversight, and this body would ultimately have oversight to the extent we weren't achieving what we were, what we were required to achieve.
Okay. Related to that, but looking more on a local level, can you talk a little bit about what, if anything, is being done to encourage either local shuttle service, or I know you've talked about making it, the connection to downtown more accessible to pedestrians, but I, in general, I'm trying to understand what things you're doing to get people out of cars as they're moving within San Carlos?
Yeah, and so our TDM consultant can talk a little bit more about how we get people out of cars. But one thing, as far as shuttles go, is, you know, we've agreed to be, you know, a part of any community-wide shuttle service, to the extent that the city wanted to, you know, have something, that's something we would certainly be a part of and would be required, frankly, to participate in. In addition to that, you know, the site will likely have its own shuttles. But what, the, the purpose of T, of these TDM measures, for example, there's financial incentives. There's guaranteed ride home. So if an employee misses their train because they were in a meeting, the company agrees to pay for them to Uber or, or take a taxi home. So again, all of these measures are put in place to really incent employees. Employees who use mass transit, not only do they get a free train pass, they get paid. They get paid to use it through, you know, in their paycheck. So all of these sorts of things really help to incent folks to get out of their cars and to use mass transit. And .7 miles, especially if we improve the fit and finish and feel of that, of that .7 miles, is really very achievable when you compare it to downtown Palo Alto, downtown Redwood City. You know, a lot of these downtowns, you're walking that far from your office building. And so although our walk is a little different, we still think that it's a walk that people will want to take. And one anecdote, Mark, is these buildings will be very expensive to lease versus, let's say, Redwood Shores. The only reason a tenant will go here is because the train matters and restaurants matter. If those things don't matter to them, they're much better off going somewhere else. And so, you know, this is truly a transit-oriented project where tenants who care and are utilizing those resources will want to be.
Okay, fair enough. And actually, I, I should have, for personal reasons, appreciated. And actually, I should have, for personal reasons, appreciated the .7-mile thing, because the one constraint my wife and I gave our realtor when we were looking for our new property, where we bought our new home, is we said it had to be within three-quarters of a mile of Pete's Coffee, so we could walk there. The last question, at least for now, and somebody may have mentioned this, and I just missed the number. Do you have a sense, Mike, of roughly, when this thing is fully leased out, how many employees or how many people will be working onsite?
Yes. So that was something we talked a lot about at Planning Commission. 1,600 is the number that we're targeting. And so one of the important aspects of the TDM program is that it has a max trip. And so why is that important? That's important because one of the questions brought up in Planning Commission is, in a future day, if air conditioning systems get better and people use less power in the building, so the actual infrastructure of the buildings could support heavier density, how do we keep it from being, you know, some infinite number? And what we came to was, what really matters is what kind of traffic is being generated, right? And so there's a maximum number of trips that the project is able to generate as part of the TDM program. And again, that'll be monitored by the city. The city will have the ability to put, you know, those little bumpy things at our entries and exits and see how many cars are going in and out of the project, to make sure that we don't create more traffic than was intended.
Okay, fair enough, and thank you. It's interesting, the 1,600-person figure. I've heard through the grapevine that on various social media sites in town, there seems to be an impression among some people that there'll be like 5,000 people working here. I have no idea where that number came from.
No, and I think, you know, there's, here's kind of a distinction that I'll make. If you go to 2,000-square-foot office space in downtown San Carlos, or any downtown, or anywhere, and you see a six-month-old startup who just got funded, it will feel a lot like a sweatshop. You'll see people packed in there and they'll be, once companies get more mature, they don't occupy space that same way. And although they may still be on benches, which is a common way now, benching is a furniture system, rather than cubicles, you're all on long tables, they will reserve other spaces, cafeteria spaces, break rooms, congregating areas, private conference rooms, phone rooms. And so when you actually add it all up, they're not occupying any denser than they used to at Cisco back in the 90s. They're just occupying it differently. And this is not a startup sort of a building. In fact, you know, this is going to be five or eight very large, kind of more mature companies. And so they'll occupy at a less dense level than maybe people would think of as, you know, a small downtown startup.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Ron?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Apologize if I missed it. So assuming there's an approval, what's your project timeline? When do you start? When do you finish? When does it get occupied?
So that's, that's a difficult question, you know, given what just happened in England. You know, I mean, there's a lot of drivers that drive a project like this. It's an economy in its own, almost, because it's a large project. But in general, the soonest we could be under construction would probably be 12 to 18 months from now. And I think that would be very optimistic. So I'm just kind of, you know, that's kind of as soon as I think we could be under construction. I think that would be unlikely, but that would be the soonest.
Okay. And the other question, you said five to eight companies would probably occupy this building. And you're the developer, not going to be the, obviously, the companies that occupy it. But the companies that you've spoken to, I assume you've spoken to several that are interested in this kind of a building. Do they mention anything about flexible work schedules in terms of, you know, you're not going to have 1,600 people, I assume, arriving at eight and leaving at five? How's that going to work?
No. And that's actually part of the TDM program and part of the traffic analysis, I think. But, you know, it's anybody's guess at some level. But we do know that folks don't work like they used to. It's not nine to five, be home for dinner, right? You know, so people say, oh, well, the trains are at max capacity at 8:30 in the morning. Yeah. A lot of these employees will come in at 10 or 11 and stay till seven or eight. So, you know, people do vary their work schedules now, and we anticipate that. And we, yes, I agree with what you would say. You're not going to see everybody coming in at 8:30 in the morning and leaving at five.
And I guess it doesn't necessarily follow that there will be 1,600 people onsite every day?
No, certainly not. I mean, you know, we all know from our own companies that, you know, some people are sick, some are on vacation, some elect to work from home or what have you. A lot of these companies have much more flexible work philosophies than maybe what was in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Bob?
I think there's a question for Al or Laura. So assuming this is approved and we go forward, as Mike said, 12, 18 months, two years, when Germany becomes its own state, whatever, what's the timeline on the approval? In other words, it's approved today. Do they have to do anything before I die, or do they just, could go on? It's just a question of, how long is it entitled, I guess?
Typically, it's a two-year entitlement. They need to get their permits within that period.
Two years? Okay. And if they don't?
Then they would need to come back to the city council.
Back to the city council. Okay. So it's 24 months?
I believe so. And I'll go back and look at the development agreement to make sure, but that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
One question for, maybe for Al, maybe for Mike. Conversation with the neighbors across the street. It looks like there's a bunch of small businesses that ring immediately around, both in terms of just the overall project and disruption during construction. Have we talked to them? Have we gotten feedback about the project? Please.
So, you know, we've done a very large number of community outreach events and notices, obviously, went out to a lot of those folks. Right now, the project's 40% vacant. And the reason it's 40% vacant is because we've worked with a lot of the tenants onsite. These are mom-and-pop operations, for the most part. Not knowing what's coming next isn't good for their business. And so we've worked with a lot of them to phase out of the project. And then those that are still there are at a lower rent, and they'll continue to be there. And they kind of understand, hey, I'm getting a cheap rent, but, you know, I have some uncertainty. With surrounding businesses, I think you've seen some letters of support from some of the surrounding businesses. I haven't spoken personally to every surrounding business, but we have tried to reach out to as many as we could. There were a couple that were parking on our site that we had to talk to, but otherwise, everything has been pretty good over there.
Okay. So you don't know of any objections from your neighbors?
No, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Laura, did you want to comment on that?
For the public meetings, we noticed 500 feet of owners and occupants. So we did catch the majority of those small businesses that are in the area. I didn't receive any direct concerns. I received some questions about timing. There's also conditions of approval, if the planning commission approvals go forward with your approval, related to some things like staging on the site and not staging on the Branson cul-de-sac, because there is some potential for impact on those immediately-adjacent businesses. So we do have some conditions of approval for that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other additions or any other questions for staff at this time? If not, now is the time for public comment. I have a number of public speaker cards. Again, I would ask, as before, that you stay within the two-minute timeframe. Our first speaker tonight is Douglas Murray, followed by Vern Justice. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilman people. I'm going to say that I have been in San Carlos and family since 1946 and also on Carmelita. So we've had a good representation tonight. In fact, the fourth and fifth generation is still living in the family home on Carmelita. And needless to say, we have seen a lot of changes in San Carlos over the years, and we believe that the Meridian 25 development will continue to make our city one of the best places to live and work. The location along 101 is very well-suited, in my opinion, for this project. And I believe, again, it will upscale the area from kind of a shabby warehouse-type developments. I personally see that they have done, or personally feel that they've done a very good job in meeting the various issues with the city and with the neighbors. We should let Redwood City get all the good office development, in my opinion. And I fully endorse this as a resident, and I urge the council to act favorably on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Vern Justice, followed by Caroline Tudor. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Vern Justice, for those of you who have been around for a while, our family's been in San Carlos since 1938, the year I was born, which makes me about 21 years old now, the way I count. In any case, those of you who are familiar with the family and have met my mother, who was always referred to in the community as just Audie. And if you ever met Audie, you certainly would not ever forget her, right, Ron? Anyway, I have been to several presentations. I have studied the plans. Our family's been very supportive of plans and development, growth in the city of San Carlos, going back to the Pop Burton days. Working with a number of families along the way, the Wheelers, the Mattsons, I mean, the names just go on and on and on. In any case, I feel that this is a very worthwhile project that will benefit the city of San Carlos in a number of ways. And I believe it's quite a positive change, I think. And once again, another step in the process for the growth of the city. And certainly, we can use the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Caroline Tudor, followed by Salish Meera. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Assuming this is passed, and I don't necessarily support it, but I'm here to request, my name's Caroline Tudor, and I've been a resident on the east side for 15 years. I'm here to request that the $750,000 that is set aside for the community improvements be used directly for the east San Carlos residential neighborhood, as the planning commission has suggested. From my understanding, the city staff has ignored all impacts of traffic and commuters going through our neighborhood, our residential neighborhood, and didn't include any residential streets in their traffic study. Our neighborhood is already impacted by traffic, and this new project will certainly add to this impact. Again, please use this $750,000 directly for our east side neighborhood to help reduce the impact this project specifically will have on the east side residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Salish Meera, followed by Scott Kilpatrick.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, Vice Mayor Griselli, members of the council, excuse me, Salish Meera. I've only been a resident for San Carlos since 1992, so I'm a newcomer. I'm here to support the project that's in front of you. The project has gone through a very public and thorough vetting process. The planned development permit is consistent with the city's goals, policies, and objectives. The environmental document complies with CEQA. Having said that, the proposed project is a higher and better use than what's out there now. This is what our city needs, a new transit-oriented development, walking distance to the downtown, but also the Caltrain station. The proposal has an aggressive TDM program, as we saw, and entails a robust community benefits package, which will include substantial right-of-way improvements, which includes pedestrian enhancements to the street and the right-of-way. With all that under consideration, I would encourage you to make the applicable findings and approve the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Scott Kilpatrick, followed by Paul Maginetti.
Scott Kilpatrick, resident in San Carlos since 2008. I've watched this project since the very beginning and have worked in many conversations with the developers at Wendy Hill, who have done an amazing job at communicating with us and giving us feedback, and really felt like they were listening and a partner in the process. I feel like this is a great transition to a knowledge-based workforce and a knowledge-based product, and that this is a good way for us to kind of lead the change. I currently work in Palo Alto and take the train three days a week from San Carlos. I feel like our train station is currently underutilized, both northbound and southbound, and that this project could make a solid change to that and better utilize that good transportation hub. I feel like, from everything I've seen and all the questions I've answered, it's been very favorable, and I fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Maginetti, followed by Peter Davy. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I've met Mike a number of times. I'm still ambivalent about this. The best precedent that I'm seeing here is having the EPA clean this up. DTSC has no business doing any sort of cleanup of the contamination that's there. The other precedent that I don't like to see is the height. I don't want to see Old County Road become Veterans Boulevard. So that's a problem for me. And add to that, 1,500 cars onto an already congested roadway. It's going to have impacts. And as Caroline said, they go through their neighborhoods, they speed through their neighborhoods trying to get past Holly. So without a plan for how to direct traffic in some other way, other than cramming them down Holly Street, it's just going to be congestion that's going to ripple all the way across the city. So as president of the GESE, I'm saying, we can't support this project at this time.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Peter Davy, followed by Joy Sykes. Good evening.
Hi. It's getting late, so I'll just be very brief. I'm a resident of San Carlos, about 40 years. And I've attempted, on a number of occasions, because I'm self-employed, to find a business locale that was Class A, and was never able to do it in San Carlos. I was either in Belmont or San Mateo or other locations. So this is a terrific, I'm retired now, so I won't have a chance to use this, but this is just an extraordinary placeholder for, you know, profoundly, it's a beautiful building, which all the ecological elements. I rode my bike most days of the week. I had, my last office was on Industrial, just maybe four blocks from where this is. And I think it's going to be an amazing platform, so I'm in support of it for those reasons. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joy Sykes, followed by Kathy Palmer-Lowen. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. In the interest of time, I will just say that I am in agreement with Vern. Vern Justice and I are neighbors. We live on the same block. I've only been here two years, but I couldn't agree more. I'm a fan of this building. It's beautiful. It's environmentally responsible, and I really hope that it gets passed tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kathy Palmer-Lowen, followed by our former mayor, Don Eaton. Good evening, Kathy.
I was just noticing, I was at the new Osh store the other day, and how beautiful that Osh store is and the Pamp, and how that whole part of town has just really improved. It's been really nice to see that. I live at 1919 Howard. I'm here to speak and support a Meridian 25. I think the project will provide significant economic benefits to San Carlos, as has been described tonight, including strong support for our schools. The developer has proven to be community-minded and has worked hard to address community concerns. I've been to several community meetings and have been really impressed with the way that they've interacted with everyone. So I support the project.
Thank you very much. Now, our former mayor, Don Eaton, followed by Jeff Grace. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As I recall, some years ago, a past council took the initiative to beautify industrial road, to upgrade the infrastructure substantially, and to improve the traffic management planning for an industrial road at that time that looked like an industrial road. It was pretty dingy, as has been mentioned in the past here. The project as proposed is, in my mind, exactly the type of project that industrial road was improved for. As you've heard, the Planning Commission has well-vetted this project and has recommended it to you in a unanimous decision. The thing that I'm particularly impressed with is the design of this project and how they have stepped back the height in trade-off for what could have been a number of very, not a number of, a couple of very boxy-looking buildings and not a whole lot of landscaping. So they've tried to make this an entirely quality project. The planning and design process has gone through in a way that has considered all of the issues you've heard, but to include and not be limited by the landscaping, the additional trees, the environmental cleanup, the parking, the traffic management, the working with the convenience of downtown and Caltrain to try to make those things work to both complement the city and the project. This is a well-designed, high-quality project that we want and that we need in this town. It has minimal impacts to the east side residences, and it, on top of that, would provide substantial contributions to the city for what has been labeled "community benefit." That comes in terms of direct cash contributions, which are substantial, as well as property tax and sales tax enhancements that will benefit the city for many, many years. To that end, I would highly recommend that you approve this project as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Our next speaker is Jeff Grace, followed by Scott Cleveland. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and city council. Jeff Grace, resident in San Carlos for 37 years. I'm here to speak in support of the Meridian 25 project that will meet the zoning requirements that are being planned, and is consistent with the city's general plan. Appears to be the highest and best use for this property. It'll help bring jobs to the city. Developers have taken measures to mitigate the issues that have been brought up with this project, including the transportation. The building visually appears to be a very attractive asset to the city of San Carlos. But for me, the most attractive aspect of this project is the economic benefit to the city, and not only for the city's general fund, but for the San Carlos schools that will realize an economic benefit from this. As a precinct captain for two school bond measures previously, the economic benefit to schools is very important to me. So please approve this project as recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Cleveland, followed by Dimitri Vandelos. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and members of the San Carlos City Council. Thank you for your time. I ask city council to approve the Meridian 25 Windy Hill project. I believe this plan is overwhelmingly beneficial to San Carlos and provides a forward-facing plan for future development here in San Carlos. We deserve to reap the benefits of tax growth like that happening in neighboring communities such as Ridwood City and Belmont, and Windy Hill and Meridian 25 provides this benefit and so much more. And the addition of clean industry and environmentally mindful development is important to San Carlos. This project provides just that. I ask the city council to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now we have Dimitri Vandelos, followed by Jason Mansfield. Good evening.
Hi there. I'm going to just get straight to the points, and so I'm only going to have two minutes. GSE board hasn't taken a position for or against the project. We've been somewhat neutral about it, and we understand that there's always pros and cons to this or any other development. We also appreciate that Mr. Fields has taken time to try and work with the community, and we commend that the project will use the EPA instead of the local county agencies, because we feel there'll be a better and more thorough job in the environmental cleanup. As we've seen in the past with many projects on the east side, the cleanup has been suboptimal. We, however, are very, very concerned that the process for this massive development is being rushed. There was a special Planning Commission meeting on an off night that had no notice to the neighborhood. We only had three people at that meeting who caught wind and showed up. Special meeting was hidden on the city's website, wasn't advertised prominently to the residential neighborhood, but there was a substantial turnout of pro-development people there. So the word got out to a certain segment. Fast-tracking the largest commercial development proposed for the city of San Carlos to accommodate summer vacations and time off for the council, or for any reason, is poor judgment. This project, single project, uses up all of the planned commercial development in the city general plan. It's important to know that, the single project. So it's going to have to be amended if you want more Class A space. So what are the issues? Height. Buildings are 100 feet tall, using mechanicals. General plan is 50 feet. We haven't had a compromise on height, but the larger issue is setting a precedent for the neighborhood. We're concerned about being engulfed and surrounded by buildings that will end up being taller than 100 feet because the precedent has been set. Parking. 1,500 parking spots, 1,600 employees in the plan. There's something wrong with that picture. Clearly, the spots are there for a larger, significantly larger employee count.
I was going to ask you to finish your last thought there.
Yeah, I have a few more points.
You're welcome to send an email to us, or...
Yeah, so that's part of the fast-tracking. So 800 to 1,200 people walking and biking through our neighborhood. If we say 50% of the employees will take public transit, no traffic study was done on the neighborhood streets. We've talked about that. People will cut through Cherry and Montgomery Streets. Six companies divided by 1,600 people, that's 229 people for a company. Those are pretty small companies. What I'm here is to talk about, and the main point I want to make is, it's clear that you guys are going to approve it. I mean, this is just being pushed through. We recommend that the council approves the Planning Commission's recommendation to guarantee the small amount of funds, 750K, to go to mitigate the impacts of these buildings for the community. Most of the money is going into the commercial area. There's some $5 million bucks in fees. That's all been talked about, but none of the money is guaranteed for mitigations for the residential GESE neighborhood. So that's what we're asking for, and we hope that you approve what the Planning Commission recommended by unanimous.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jason Mansfield, followed by our former mayor, Andy Kline. Good evening.
Hi, Jason Mansfield, resident of San Carlos for 19 years, and I'll put on all my different hats. First, as a civil engineer, so the environmental document, I'm sure, is complete and accurate. The zoning amendment seems pretty reasonable, and the development agreement seems pretty generous to me. As a general plan update committee member, this is exactly what we had in mind to try and offset and maintain our smaller industrial kind of uses around the area. And it's a perfect spot, right, with the transportation opportunities. Then, my next hat, as a chamber board member, anybody here remember a small company that brought the governor to San Carlos? Maybe? Maybe? Right, Tesla? They left, didn't have an opportunity to stay here, and, you know, maybe this wouldn't have been the right project for them, but we are great at building these types of companies and not keeping them. So this gives us the opportunity to keep them. Another hat is husband of my wife, who has to commute to Santa Clara for a job in a place like this that's nowhere near a train station, and she could instead walk here. So please, I encourage you to support the project, just so that my wife can walk to work, and I don't always have to come home and check on the dogs and that sort of thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The last speaker card I have is for our former mayor, Andy Kline. Good evening, Andy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm here, like Jason, representing the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce as one of its members of the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors of the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce overwhelmingly supports the Meridian 25 development. We feel that this development will be beneficial to the businesses in San Carlos, beneficial to the city's coffers, and fits with the character of our community. We hope that you will approve this project this evening. On a personal note, I have two other points I wish to make. The first is that I sat in your seats with some of the current council during the budget crisis that culminated in the years of 2009 to 2011. During those two years, we had to merge Public Safety, negotiate givebacks with the unions, and privatize our parks maintenance. This was a trying time on the council and for the community. I truly hope that no council member in the future will ever have to choose between police for parks, fire service, or our community centers. But in order to weather the next recession, we have to rely on more than just cost-saving measures. We need to continue to grow the city's tax base. Meridian 25 isn't a silver bullet, but it is developments like this that will help us get through the next economic downturn in one piece. My second point was that after serving on the general plan committee, again with Jason, and on the city council, I have watched many developments go through town. Most are acrimonious, and most developers build and then leave the community. Watching the gentlemen from Windy Hill engage with this community has been a pleasure and should be applauded. It is so refreshing to see a developer who is generally interested in listening to the public and wants to help solve any impacts the development will have prior to coming before the council. Now that we have seen development done the right way, we should hold all developers in San Carlos to the standard set by Windy Hill. I hope you will vote tonight to approve this development, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. I have another speaker card from Jessie Richter. Please come on up. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jessie Richter. I've lived in San Carlos for nine years and recently purchased a home on the east side. And as someone who lives on Industrial Road, I can say that you can really only improve the area, and I think this project goes above and beyond what could be done. That said, you know, there are a couple of comments made by Al that this could be an anchor along commercial, and the Windy Hills representative talked about encouraging more commercial and retail development on the east side, which would be great. However, there is a residential area there, and I do think the project should be approved, but I would just hope that the council would keep in mind the residential area and take a look as the project goes forth, and people are actually commuting to work there, looking at traffic in the neighborhoods, and making sure that we're taking care of residents. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I have no other public speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item tonight? All right. Hearing none. Let's see, I...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Recommend me close the public hearing?
Sure. All right. I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokat?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Matt, your light is on. Did you want to make a motion, or did you have a question?
I think the item I have, I have a question, but I would also, depending on the kind of answer I get, I may want to add it to one of our actions that we're doing here. So sorry I had to step out. I've had to rush home to help out my wife, who's healing up from hip surgery, so apologize for that. But, and probably this question might have been when you finished your presentation, so you might want to answer it. We all see, when we drive 101 these days, what people have fondly come to know as Google buses. And so that was one of my questions, was with the way the site plan is laid out, the parking lot and so forth. You know, unlike our mayor, I don't work for one of these big companies, and so I don't see the terminus of where a Google bus ends up and how they operate on the campuses that they go to. Could you speak to that? Because I could really see that happening here, and it would help mitigate the traffic and so forth.
Yes, and in fact, we're hoping it happens. And there are a few things we did to try and encourage that. The first thing we did is the first level of the garage is taller than typical. And the reason for that is so that buses can actually fit into the garage. And then we established a drop-off area for buses as well, that I could show you on the site plan. Yeah, but so there's a drop-off area, and, you know, one of the conversations that came up with parking is, you know, we are going to have to, what these buses do now is they enter the site, they'll come through the garage, they'll drop off, and then they'll leave site. And the bus companies, you know, have their own yards somewhere, and that's where the bus sits until it's time to go home, and then they come back through. So the project really benefits from Branston, from having the stoplight there and having that street. It helps us get traffic off Industrial quickly, and then circulate them through the garage, and then get them back out. And so one improvement to the exit of the project, if you're, so the driveway where the crosswalk is further south of the project, there won't be a left turn out of there anymore. So you won't be able to cross Industrial like you can today. You'll only be able to turn right and go to the stoplight at Branston. So those are some of the circulation things we've dealt with, and some of the improvements we put in place to make sure that buses could come into the project.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I hear from his answer is there's no need to add anything to any actions we're doing tonight, because you've already planted into the project. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Ron?
I was just going to make a motion.
Did you have an initial question?
I just, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
No, I was asking you...
Oh, I was just wondering if you were able to get my answer?
Yes. To which question?
You only have one.
The length of time question?
Yes.
Al can elaborate.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
So the parcel map, which was approved by the Planning Commission, is good for two years, and they can extend it for a year after that. So that's essentially, they can't do the development, they can't build over property lines, so they can't do the development unless they get that parcel map. The other thing is the development agreement, just as a separate timeline, is good for 15 years, unless there's a mutual agreement to change the terms of the development agreement.
So the third year, do they have to come, the Planning Commission and city council, or just Planning Commission?
Just Planning Commission.
Okay.
They would have to get a new approval for the parcel map.
Okay. So, and if they get a new approval for parcel map, how long will that be?
Typically, it goes, it starts the same clock...
Starts the cycle again?
Yeah, two years with another year after that option. And you can, the city council has the authority to add something to the planned development if you want different timelines.
Does the city council...
Or the development agreement, I'm sorry.
Does the city council have the ability, when it goes to Planning Commission that third year, to say, "And by the way, send it up to us, too"?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we have flexibility, that's all.
Yes.
That's all I'm looking for.
Yes, you do.
There's a call-up feature in the municipal code.
Okay, so the city council has an opportunity to weigh in if they decide to do that. Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Ron?
All right. I move to introduce ordinance number...
68.
68. I apologize, I think I jumped ahead. I moved to adopt a resolution 2016 dash, is that the right one? Or do we, all right, so I do want to be down there. Sorry.
No, no, you're right.
Yeah.
The resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration is the first action.
Right, that's where I'm going. Okay. Sorry. So I move to adopt resolution 2016 dash...
68.
58. Okay, 68. Resolution, the city council, the city of San Carlos adopting the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the Meridian 25 Office project.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because that's the disclosure item, it's probably appropriate at this point, that I appreciate the time that Mike Fields has spent over the last year or so answering all the questions I had for him, as I was learning about this project. I'm sure I annoyed him on more than one occasion with some of the questions, but I, none of that, all of that was necessary to serve some opinion about how I would act on these matters.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokat?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
All right. And I move to introduce ordinance number...
1507.
1507, an ordinance of the city council. The city of San Carlos amending the zoning map to change the site from general commercial/ industrial GCI zoning district to a planned development zoning district and approving the associated planned development plan for the Meridian 25 Office project at 821, 837, 853, 871, and 877 Industrial Road, and 831 Branston Road, APNS 046-140-090, and then -100, -110, -120, -130, and -140.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Bob, I saw your light went on, and I go... Okay. Okay.
Yeah, just a quick comment, because I know it's getting late. You know, we've had several projects come through in my time on the council, and I want to congratulate Mr. Field for his outreach to everyone, to the staff, to the council, to the community, to the neighborhood. I think that was evident in the comments tonight, so thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mark?
Yeah, I just would like to echo and second Ron's comments as well. I think that Mike has done a tremendous job of interacting with the community as best he can, and has been very supportive of the community in a number of matters. And frankly, I wish more developers looking to do projects in San Carlos took the approach and had the philosophy that he did.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Do we need one more resolution?
I think so. I move to introduce ordinance number?
Fifteen oh eight.
Eight oh eight, an ordinance of the City Council. The city of San Carlos approving a development agreement with WHPV Tankage SPE LLC for the Meridian 25 office project.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Bob?
To the chair, your motion, Mr. Collins, will include all the items that the Planning Commission recommended?
Uh...
Because that's what it's going to do, unless we eliminate some of them.
Which recommendations are you referring to?
Well, they said they wanted two-point-one, what, commercial street improvements, Old County Road improvements, Branston Road intersection, Industrial Road, and $750,000 to go to the east side.
Through the chair, Mike, I discussed this with Mr. Mulpey, and perhaps he would like to reaffirm that, but my understanding is it does not.
Mark, Al is at the podium here. Why don't you clarify for us, Al?
If you approve the development agreement and everything before you without making any changes, then the Planning Commission's recommendation does not become part of the document. It's just, they made a recommendation, but we did not make those changes to the documents before you this evening.
So, if we want to include them, then he has to include them in his motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I apologize, but somewhere along the line, I want to make sure that we're aware of these recommendations.
We are aware of them, and I think they're all included. I'm not recommending that.
So you're not recommending any of them?
Well, I'm recommending everyone but the inclusion of the $750,000.
Yeah, through the chair, I think you have, I think, Al.
I think that's...
Al, I think he has to then make the motion, or through the city attorney, he has to make the motion with that, those amendments?
He does not.
He does not?
No, I'm sorry.
What did I just hear?
He doesn't. What I said is, the development agreement in all the documents do not contain any of those changes that the Planning, that specific change for, including that $750,000, for a very specific purpose. It's just for council discretion. You can either use it on maintenance or parks. That's the way it's written in the documents before you, even though it does say what the Planning Commission recommended to you.
But it does include the other three items?
What are...
Two-point-one million, the two-hundred-and-fifty, and the five-hundred?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
It was just that one particular issue with the seven-fifty. It does not contain that.
All right. I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure everybody's clear.
If I may clarify, it's not that the council cannot later earmark that seven-fifty. It's, you know, as a discussion on it, my own feeling is, you know, by the time that seven-fifty comes into the city, this council potentially could look a lot different. And so, for us to limit it now is not really fair to a council later that may want to do something different, and may in fact want to earmark it for something very specific to the east side, but that would be up to that council.
Agreed. Agreed.
All right. Any further discussion? I, just so I recall, we did have a second on Ron's motion. Okay. So, is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
All right. We will now move on to item eight C.
By the way, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
I just wanted to say that, I have to admit, I'm confused about all the comments I keep hearing about it getting late. The sun is just coming up here.
Excellent. All right. So, we have two more items on our agenda, and we have 15 minutes left in our allotted time. So, I'm guessing we're not going to make it through in the remaining 15 minutes.
You need a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45?
Second?
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. If I could ask the audience to make their way out of the chamber so we can move on with tonight's business.
C. Definitely going on men.
All right. Item eight C is consideration of not increasing residential and commercial wastewater rates in fiscal year 2017, followed by a 5% increase in fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019, and introducing an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 13 dot oh eight dot one six oh sewer service charges and fees. Mr. Walter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, before you, we have the proposed no increase in the first year for our sewer rates. One of the things the council will need to do tonight is open a public hearing to hear from residents that may have a different opinion about how the rate increase may go. I'll introduce Alex Handlers from Bartle Wells and Associates, and he'll quickly run through the presentation, given the time of the evening, so that we can get to the decision point.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone. I'm just going to give a quick overview here and hit a few key points from each of these slides, the nature of time, and to make sure everyone's on the same page as we go into this. Your sewer utility, you've got about, you know, almost 30,000 accounts, mostly residential. The city operates the wastewater collection system, over 100 miles of pipelines, pump stations that take the wastewater from the various homes and businesses. That's conveyed to, we'll say, the edge of town, where there's a huge pipeline owned and operated by Silicon Valley Clean Water, the regional wastewater treatment provider, who conveys the wastewater to their treatment plant for treatment and disposal. The facilities here in town are, you have a lot of older facilities. The pipelines, like many Bay Area communities, were put in 50-plus years ago, a lot of them in need of repair and replacement. At the treatment plant, that whole facility is at the end of its useful life. The force main and the treatment plant are being rebuilt at a cost of almost $800 million. Financially, your sewer enterprise is self-supporting. The rates are the main source of revenue, so you've got to adopt rates that are adequate to fund the cost of service. You guys have done a very good job, I think, in recent years. It wasn't popular, but you did some substantial rate increases. That's put you in very good financial position, despite the ongoing financial challenges. It looks like you can get by with pretty small rate increases. So, hopefully, good news. The financial challenges I already mentioned, rebuilding that treatment plant in the force main, that's almost $800 million. San Carlos's share is about 15%, $120 million. A portion of that has already been done, but there's still some major projects that are going to be done in upcoming years. No, you don't have to come up with $100 million of cash to complete those, but that's going to hit the city in terms of increased debt service that phases in over the next upcoming years. On top of that, you've got a lot of needs in the collection system. You're operating under a consent decree, a legal requirement based on a lawsuit from San Francisco Baykeeper. There were approximately 10 million or so projects that needed to be done to reduce the potential for sanitary sewer overflows. And the good news is, the city's been working on that. Those should be completed by the end of next fiscal year. Funds that have been used for that project then will transition over to addressing the needs of your aging sewer collection system. You've got a lot of old pipeline, a lot of it's made of vitrified clay. Sure, you've made improvements in a few areas of town, but you've still got a long way to go. So the capital improvements there are going to phase in in future years upon completion of the consent decree projects. And on top of that, every agency faces the need for ongoing rate increases for cost inflation. Staffing, insurance, electricity, et cetera, you name it, costs go up, and generally, the agencies that stay on top of those costs wind up a lot better over the long term than folks who try to put, go many years with no rate increases and face the need for large rate spikes. This slide here just shows you the needs of the Silicon Valley Clean Water Capital Program. About $350 million needed over the next three years, so big projects. We developed some detailed financial projections, looking long-term, to see what rate increases were needed to meet the revenue needs of the sewer system, and make sure you had enough financing capacity so that Silicon Valley Clean Water can continue on with its capital program. The rate increases that are being recommended, initially were a little higher. This is a reduced rate alternative, 0% next year, followed by two 5% rate increases. So hopefully, a little better news than we initially recommended. That was what was with notice to ratepayers. This kind of shows graphically. The red line shows the revenues from the projected rates. The blue and the green shows the expenditures in future years. I'm not going to go into this stake. The sewer rate structure, a couple of key points, based on the rate study that was done in 2013, so pretty recently, and the subsequent review of the residential rate alternatives in 2014 that resulted in a reduction of the multifamily sewer rates. Commercial, resident, right now, your rates are probably the most common type of rate in California, with flat residential rates and commercial rates based on, you know, volumetric charges, higher rates for higher-strength types of uses. In terms of Prop 218, which is a kind of an area that's become under growing concern in recent years, I will say your rates are fully compliant. The fees cannot exceed the estimated reasonable cost of providing the service, and there's certainly the rate study and the justification to back that. Doesn't mean there's not other ways of doing it, but yours is certainly a very legitimate way. The other key thing about Prop 218 is it established a procedure that you have been following for rate increases. And I will commend the city for going above and beyond the minimum requirements of that procedure by putting in your Prop 218 notice specific instructions for how people can send in a written protest. You don't have to do that, but you did. Word I have is, as of 5 o'clock today, there were 14 protests out of the over 11,000 that were sent out. Doesn't mean everyone's happy with rate increases, but it's generally an indication that there's not huge widespread anger over this, even though people don't like any rate increases. I think people understand what you're going through, it's kind of a once-in-a-generation need to replace the treatment plant, the collection system, and you've got a lot of new regulatory requirements coming down the line with that treatment plant, too. So, this slide shows the proposed rates with a 0% rate increase next year, the 2.5% after that. This slide here shows graphically what's happened with your single-family rate going back to the mid-'90s with no rate increases, followed by some, you know, smaller rate increases than in recent years, steeper rate increases as you've been addressing the capital needs of the treatment plant, which was originally grant-funded. You'd never had to fund that in the past. So, conclusion, your sewer enterprise has been facing some very major financial challenges. You're not the only agency that's dealing with this. The projections indicate you've done a great job getting yourself in a good position. You've already done the heavy lifting with your rates, from my perspective. Going forward, what's being recommended is the 0% with the 2.5%. We're not recommending any changes in the residential rate structure at this time. And following this, the city, there are some folks in the city who are financially challenged, paying any type of, you know, utility rates. The city has established a low-income discount for its garbage rates, and coming up next, there's going to be a presentation on establishing a similar program for the sewer rates. Steps tonight, this is the public hearing to adopt the rates. It's an ordinance, so the rates wouldn't be fully implemented tonight. That would be done at the next meeting, typically during, I guess, the consent calendar. The goal is the new rates have to be put on the property taxes coming up very soon, so there's time to do that for the next fiscal year. There's no rate increase. The rates would, I guess, you've got plenty of time to get them on for subsequent years. And that concludes what I wanted to cover. Open it up to questions, comments.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Questions for staff? Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one for the moment. When was the Baykeeper lawsuit? What year was that?
The city signed the consent decree in 2010.
2010. Okay. Thanks. That makes sense.
Okay. Other questions? Mark, any questions from you?
I know, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. If there are no questions for staff, now is the time for public comment. I have three public comment cards. Our first speaker tonight is Douglas Murray. Good evening again.
I just had a couple of quick questions, and I don't know who can answer these, but as you know, I've lived here many years. How is the single-family resident charge calculated, the current $1,065?
Unfortunately, we don't do Q and A. We'll take comments, and we can have staff answer the questions when you're done. So if you want to ask all your questions?
Yeah, that's my first question. And then I say, I ask, is there a senior discount offered or under consideration? Certainly, the board would agree that a household with four or five or more uses sewer services in larger quantities than one or two senior citizens. Now, I do notice on the agenda that you have, under the new business, a low-income sewer rate discount. I don't know, as a senior citizen, if I'd be considered in the low, low income, but I certainly don't use that much sewer service anymore. I used to. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Our next speaker is Lorene Lederer. Good evening, Lorene.
I've toured the SVCW plant. I've met privately with the authority engineer. I've spoken with Bartle Wells, whose report shows eight local communities using variable-rate schemes, splitting it 60% fixed service fee plus 40% variable usage rate. Last month, Foster City added their name, bringing it to nine local communities using variable rate. Belmont uses a variable rate, resulting in three, two homes paying $532 less than a 5.3 home. Rates will continue to rise every year for the next eight years, level out for five years, and then remain high. This is a long-term subsidy from small users to large users. No utility charges a flat rate. A computer program will extract data needed to assign rates to a defined budget. There would be no problem meeting a budget under that scheme. There would be no problem meeting a budget under that scheme. The council's back-of-the-napkin analysis on 5-9 claimed SVCW was going to be having to use more chemicals to process waste during the drought. Not true. They use no chemicals regardless of the load. There was a claim that low users will see only 5% savings on a variable-rate scheme. Again, that's not true. Additionally, as years go by, the savings in dollars will also increase. The current rate, all of my research really supported, showed no support for a flat rate, no reason for it. The current flat-rate system is unfair and needs to change. So I hope you ask city staff to do the analysis needed to provide the real information you need to make the change, because this is a 30-year effort, that we're going to be paying for it. Thanks.
Thank you. The last speaker card I have is for Angela Boland.
Thank you so much for being here, and further, thank you for serving the community. Genuinely, I appreciate that. Mayor Johnson and council members, my name is Angela Boland. I live on Bell Avenue with my two daughters. I have been a resident for 18 years, and I've owned my property for 17 of those years. To give you just a little history on me, six and a half years ago, I went through an unexpected divorce. I was a stay-at-home mom at the time and had been for 10 years. I had a decision to make at that time, and what I had decided is that I wanted to keep my daughters in the only home that they had ever known, and that was my goal. So I went back to work as an executive assistant. I don't get child support. I don't get alimony. I never have, and I never will. But for the past six and a half years, I have paid the mortgage, the property taxes, all of the utilities, by myself. I have two daughters in private Catholic school. My oldest daughter will be a junior at Mercy. It's not inexpensive. So we live a very simple, modest life. I don't take my daughters on vacation. My shoes are Payless Shoe Source. I am the gardener. I am the house cleaner. I'm the electrician. I have changed the light fixtures, turned off the power, even though I know I don't have to, but I feel safer. And as evidenced by my hands, I dashed home, and I am also the painter. So I do it all, and I'm trying to do my best to make ends meet. I've canceled Netflix and DirecTV, and I have two teenage daughters. That is major. I am paycheck-to-paycheck, but I've done it for six and a half years. I do it for my kids. My house is a 1,270-square-foot little postage stamp of a house, but it is our house. I'm proud that I've kept us there for this long. But every increase, PG&E, garbage, water, it just kind of packs another box of teacups into that moving truck, and I don't want us to move. Where am I going to put my daughters where they won't be away from their friends and family? So while this may not seem like a big deal, and maybe there's not a lot of people here, I think a lot of people sometimes feel defeated. I haven't wanted garbage rates to go up, but it happens. But I felt the need to stand up and just say that, you know, not every family is a two-income family, two doctors, two lawyers, or just two professionals. It's just me. So I hope that this flat rate is not accepted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Please come up. If you could introduce yourself. Good evening.
Hello. My name's Jesse Montalvo, resident on Cedar Street, neighbor of Laureen. And matter of fact, there are about six other members of our block that wanted to be here, so I'm going to have to speak on their behalf. We really love our city. We're all in agreement that the flat rate's a little bit difficult on all of us. One of my neighbors has just had their third child. Neighbor across the street has one daughter, great piano player. So, I mean, the neighborhood is a wonderful place. What I'm leaning to is, in my particular case, my circumstances have changed medically due to circumstances I never would have resulted in. I suffer from severe migraines. It's hampered my job qualifications and things I can do now. And we're going, at this point in time, to paycheck-to-paycheck. This, like many others here, running in the same set of circumstances. And matter of fact, some of my friends that aren't here wanted to also voice that to you all. We love our city. We love and respect all of you. We hope that you'll consider what we have to say, and you'll at least assist us so that we can all continue to be the great neighbors that we all are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. To the gentleman who had some questions, we're going to have a presentation in just a moment about the low-income program, and hopefully, you'll be able to get your questions answered there. It is a public hearing. Your light is still on, but did you have additional questions?
No, I think I just had it turned off before. I was just wondering, shall we close?
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion. You may.
Who wants to make a vote?
No, I can't. I'm going to have to vote against it, because I'm going to have to...
I'm going to have to vote against it, in fact, because I voted against it last time. I think it should be 334, not 055. So I've got to be consistent.
Okay. All right. I'll make the motion. Let's see. I move to introduce ordinance number...
1509.
1509, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 13.08.160, sewer service charges and fees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Matt?
So the discussion I have is, and it's partly a question as well, I guess, for staff, is personally, I don't agree with having the flat rate, but my impression is, tonight, we're voting on this. Changing from a flat rate to a variable rate is really not on the docket right now. So to get that to happen, we just have to bring that up at a different time and see if we have a consensus of the council to discuss it. This, as I understand it, even though it's a three-year plan, doesn't necessarily lock us into the three-year plan, or does it?
You can always change.
Okay.
So Matt, if I could actually address this, because I've been doing a lot of thinking about this particular issue, because we had the big discussion last time. I remember you were very quite boisterous at the last meeting. You were slamming your hand on the dice. So I went on a tour of the sewer plant, specifically trying to understand, you know, how much is there a variable cost to this? And how much does it matter? And how, you know, can we really make an argument that we should move from a flat rate to a variable rate? So I came away kind of with the following findings. First, according to the guy who runs the sewer plant, there is some variable component to processing sewage. The second is that the total cost that each city pays is based on how much you pump through the pump station. So essentially, the total cost to the city is variable. I thought about it some more, and I realized, you know, we essentially acknowledged a variable component when we changed the rate for multifamily. And the reason we justified that is because multifamily uses less sewage than individual houses, so we've already essentially acknowledged that in our code. And then the fourth thing for me is that, you know, by saying to people, hey, you'll pay less if you, you know, use less sewer services, is essentially saying you'll pay less if there's more, if you have less water running down your drain. And so there is a small conservation component to this, which is if you take a shorter shower, you're going to pay less. So based on all of that, and based on the fact that you've got, you know, several other cities in the county that have moved to this rate structure, I'm happy to add my name to the, as another council member who would look at a variable rate. I don't think it's an emergency. I think we should do it whenever is kind of convenient, but I think I would be up for looking at, you know, what have other cities done, and, you know, what's the cost? So I wanted to see if there was another council member who'd be willing to do that as well. Okay. And I don't hear any. So we'll continue with the discussion. Ron, your light is on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. I can go after Ron.
Okay. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah. I agree to a point that, you know, there is a variable component in this, but the number that I can't get away from, nobody can get away from, is $120 million. That number is not going away. I realize that other cities have a variable rate. Belmont's rate, as I look at it now, is, what, $88.46, right? Per, is that per cubic foot? Ours is $88.82. So that's a .36 difference. I'm not sure that moving to a variable rate really makes much difference. Other cities didn't have a Baykeeper lawsuit. And if you look at the chart, that's why I asked the question. When did the Baykeeper lawsuit happen? It happened in 2010. We had to raise our rates. I find no joy in raising anybody's rates, because my rates go up, too. I have to pay that rate increase. I also noticed that for six consecutive years, this city had no rate increase at all. The number stated, I think, $276 for six straight years, even though the cost of infrastructure and maintenance went up at that point. So we've had the unfortunate job of fixing it, of fixing that rate structure. And I'm sorry, it's us, but, you know, it has to be done. If at some point in the future, there's a way to do it, to incorporate a variable rate and still get that $120 million repair number resolved, I'd be for it, but not at this point.
All right. Thanks, Ron. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to mention two things. One is that regarding variable rates, you know, I was familiar with a little bit with, because you and I talked at the Kwonos dinner, with the results of your meeting with Dan Childs. Frankly, at the time, I was very surprised to hear some of the things you said, because that was never, was not consistent with anything I'd ever been told by Silicon Valley Clean Water in the past. And so I went back and did some additional checking through staff, and I think there may be some confusion there in terms of what's variable and what's fixed, because I just found reiterated for me that really, the vast majority of their costs really are fixed. Now, it is true that the rates that the Silicon Valley Clean Water charges to member agencies are driven by the volume of flow that gets sent to them. Frankly, that was new information for me. When I learned that, I had begun a process of researching that in more depth, because quite frankly, I think that may be the wrong thing for Silicon Valley Clean Water to be doing, for precisely the same reasons that having a variable rate for residents in San Carlos, I don't think is the right thing to be doing. And in fact, it may be the case that San Carlos has been overpaying for its sewer services. Now, it may not be something that we can get back, because it may be a function of the way the JPA is structured, but I'm processing, doing some more work on that, and as I learn more, I will be happy to report back to my colleagues on what I learned.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Any further discussion? All right. If not, Crystal, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to item 8, or 9A.
Do we need a motion to extend, since we're at...
We do need a motion probably to extend.
Move that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Item 9A, consideration of adopting a resolution establishing a low-income sewer rate discount program and appropriating $40,000 annually from the general fund to fund the program. Mr. Walter.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, the item for you, the low-income rate program for our sewer enterprise, is based on council's direction in our previous meetings, that you wanted us to consider and look into that as a possibility. As the council is aware, the solid waste rate is currently available to some that qualify for the low-income program. So again, what we've done is, we've based our eligibility requirement on the PG&E care program, which is essentially a low-income program that PG&E sponsors for energy rates, utility billing. And we have a number of potentially qualifying households in San Carlos. And so what it does is, it offers a rate relief for those who are eligible, that can qualify and must enroll in the PG&E program. So what we're proposing is that it would be a 10% discount on a single-family rate. We are not proposing to apply to the multifamily properties or commercial accounts. And the main reason is because typically, those residents of San Carlos do not pay their sewer bill directly. There is some way that it's charged in their rent or something like that. So we felt like, at least getting it started, we would just use a single-family rate payer as one who has to pay their bill through the property tax, and that would be the simplest way to start the program. This does require a rate subsidy, because the other ratepayers cannot be, or this discount cannot be paid for by other ratepayers in the wastewater enterprise. And what we would be asking for is the council to appropriate $40,000 from the general fund to be able to subsidize the program funds that are needed. And again, as I mentioned, the sewer tax charges appear on the property tax bill. We are proposing that residents who qualify for the care program would pay their property tax bill first, and then be issued a reimbursement based on proof of payment at that point. And the amount that would be of the discount in the first year is $107, and then it would adjust as future rate changes occurred. So it's possible that discount would get a little bigger as time would go, if rates increased. But that's the first-year discount that we have as part of the plan. And in response to the question that the gentleman asked in the other item, there really isn't a way for us to create a senior discount program. It's, that's really, there's not really a category that we can apply to our enterprise fund that allows for a discounted rate to someone who's older than somebody else. So the care program is one that, when we were researching the trash-low-income-discount program, the PG&E care program was the one that we recognized as a good qualifying feature, so we felt like we should continue to apply that consistently as we come up with the program for the sewer rates. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'll be happy to take questions.
Thanks, Jay. Questions for Jay? Mark, or Ron?
Yeah, just a quick one. What constitutes low income? I mean, what measure, what benchmark do we use?
Again, it's the PG&E care program, which has certain criteria for income that allows someone to enroll and then be qualified for the energy cost reductions. We use the same thing. If they can qualify in the PG&E care program, we take that as enrolling them in our discount program. And I don't know the, honestly, don't know the income level.
That's all right. As long as I know there's a criterion, PG&E's got, and we use that, I'm good with that. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Ron. Any other questions? Mark, any questions from you?
No comment, but I'll wait till after the motion.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2016...
69.
69, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, establishing a low-income sewer rate discount program and appropriating $40,000 annually from the general fund to fund the program.
Second. Whatever. Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm having, first, I think, several years ago suggested that we look into this. I'm really glad that we're actually implementing it, and, you know, I know it doesn't meet the needs of everybody in the community, but I think in terms of identifying the folks who are most at risk financially and trying to provide them some help, it's very consistent with our community values, and I'm happy to deploy some of the general fund revenue to that end.
Well said. Any other discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.